All right, let's call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Reavis.
Present.
Councilmember Green.
Present.
Councilmember Beltran.
Present.
Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Present.
Mayor Meister.
Present. Okay, this is a time for oral communication. This is opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you're here for scheduled matters item number 24, there will be time during oral communication during open session. Please come forward if you have any comments at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight we have seven items on for closed session. Item one is Government Code Section 5495-7.6 Conference with Legal Negotiator, Agency Negotiator Jason Ride narrow Ulan Andrade, Employee Organizations, Porterville City Employee Association, Management Confidential Series, Porterville Safety Support Unit, Porterville Police Officer Association, Porterville Firefighter Association and Fire Officer Series. Item two, Government Code Section 5495-6.95 Libability Claim, Claimed Isella Ochoa, Agency Claimed Against City of Porterville. Item three, Government Code Section 5495-6.91 Counsel at Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Victoria Gresen, The Porterville Municipal Golf Course, E.T. All, Tulare County Superior Court Case Number PCU313670. Item four, Government Code Section 5495-6.93 Counsel at Legal Counsel, Anticipate Litigation, Significant Exposure Litigation, Four Cases In Which Facts Not Yet Known To Plan This. Item five, Government Code Section 5495-6.94 Counsel at Legal Counsel, Anticipate Litigation, Initiation Of Litigation In One Case. Item six, Government Code Section 5495-7, Consultation With Law Enforcement Regarding Incredible Threat To Security Of Public Buildings, Facilities. Item seven, Government Code Section 5495-7, Public Employee Employment Title, City Manager.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go on to closed session and read Kavina at 6:30.
Thank you Mayor. On item number A2, claim by Isela Ochoa, motion by Mayor Meister, seconded by Vice Mayor McMurphy in a 5-0 vote, that claim was denied. Thank you.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Beltran and then invocation afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that'd like to come forward for invocation?
Gracious gracious God, we thank you for your presence always, everywhere, and particularly tonight in this city council chamber. Be with our elected representatives, with city staff, and with all who have come to participate in the governance of Porterville. We ask for courage, civility, steadiness, and peace for all who have come to speak, and for open and receptive minds and hearts, and all who are gathered to listen. We ask for your justice, your fairness, and your wisdom to be realized tonight in this room that bears the city motto "In God We Trust" on its wall. Give this city, forgive this city for its sins and shortcomings. Where we fall short, help us to do better, and where we have sinned, help us to reconcile with those we have sinned against. We ask these things in the name of the One who teaches and encourages us to pray. Amen.
Is there anyone else?
Heavenly Father, we gather together today as citizens of this community to address our concerns and comments for the betterment of the city of Porterville. We lift up in prayer our mayor and all city council members, the city manager and the attorney who gives them instructions of the laws of the land. Cover them with strength, protection, and wisdom. Keep them as the apple of your eye and hide them under the shadow of your wings. Cover them with the shadow of your hand. For our police department and firefighters, hold them up and keep them safe. Cover their heads in the day of battle. Protect their family members and return them back home daily, safe and unharmed. I pray the fire of God surround and protect their lives from any destruction. Allow our leaders to always seek the welfare of the city, which conveys all aspects of peace, safety, security, welfare, and prosperity for all. May every decision be righteous in your sight, Lord, as they deliberate on the agenda before them. We declare victory over the proclamation to ensure the protection of women's safe spaces. Our city is committed to ensure dignity, safety, and privacy, particularly with women and girls in public places. In the book of Jeremiah, the prophet Jeremiah sees a rod of an almond tree. Let us draw inspiration from this biblical symbol. The almond tree stands alert, blossoming early to the coming of spring. The tree brings forth rebirth and renewal, a symbol of God's watchfulness, vigilance, and promise to fulfill His words "In God We Trust," in the name of Jesus.
Good evening.
Ma'am, are you praying or...
Yes. John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, who believeth in Him should not perish but have everlasting life." This goes for everybody who is in this building tonight. It goes for the homeless, and everybody is equal. So, I just felt like I had to say that. Everybody is equal, and that's not what I came here for tonight, but everybody in this room counts.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else at this time. Well, if you're praying, this is the time. Oral communication will be on next. Are you praying? Okay, thanks sir.
In Jesus' name, I just want to say that this is the church, and we highly respect our bodies and who we love, and who we trust, and who we put that trust in. It should solely reflect on who we are. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Hello, I am here to call unto my Lord Satan. Since you guys are here to pray to your God, I feel it is only equal for me to pray to my God. I just want to thank Him for being here today and bringing you all here and keeping you all safe.
Okay, please be seated. Okay, we're moving on to presentations. Employee of the Month.
There's one more invocation. I'll be brief.
We're moving on to Employee of the Month. You'll have your time for oral communications in just a moment.
I'm here for the invocation, sir.
Go ahead and pray, sir.
Okay, first of all, I'm not here to pray. This is an invocation. Much briefer. "Do not be daunted by the enormity of the world's grief. Do justly now. Love mercy now. Walk humbly now. You're not obligated to complete the work, but neither are you free to abandon it." This is a quote from the Talmud.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Employee of the Month. The presentation, we have two presentations. Employee of the Month and then the Short Range Transit Plan. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's Employee of the Month is Darren Nowey, and I've asked Chief Cogburn to present Employee of the Month.
Thank you, City Manager. If I could have Darren, please come forward. Right, right here is good. Yep, thank you. And then, thank you everybody for coming out for Darren's Employee of the Month tonight. I really appreciate that, so thank you. And then, thank you, everybody, for coming out for Darren's Employee of the Month tonight. I really appreciate that, so thank you. The city of Porterville is proud to recognize firefighter Darren Noe as our Employee of the Month for March twenty twenty five, celebrating his dedication, hard work, and commitment to both the Porterville Fire Department and his community. Darren has been an integral part, a member of the Porterville Fire Department since two thousand twenty-two, bringing with him years of experience and deep-rooted passion for firefighting. Growing up in the firehouse, Darren is a second-generation firefighter who has been immersed in the profession from a young age. In twenty twenty, Darren became a full-time firefighter engineer for Tulare County Fire, before proudly joining the Porterville Fire Department in twenty twenty-two. In his current role, Darren holds several key positions. He serves as an acting engineer, radio program lead, mentors new fire recruits, and plays an active role in training and teaching vertical ventilation in the Porterville Fire Department Recruit Academy. He's also instructor at the College of the Sequoias Fire Academy, where he shares his knowledge and experience with future firefighters. Outside of his professional duties, Darren enjoys spending quality time with his wife Haley and seven-month-old daughter Brenly, and their golden retriever Hudson. As a family, they enjoy outdoor activities such as hiking, snowboarding, and relaxing at the beach. Darren's unwavering dedication to his profession, mentorship, and his family exemplifies the service and commitment that makes him a true asset to the Porterville Fire Department. We are honored to recognize him as the Porterville, Porterville City Employee of the Month for March.
It's gonna be super short, so yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Cogburn for allowing me the opportunity, um, to be involved in the department of how much I am. Um, then, of course, my wife, who kind of keeps, keeps things, uh, together at home when I'm on and off duty. Uh, I know I'm away a lot, so it's, it's, uh, it's good to have her. It'd be hard to do without her. Um, then it was an honor to receive this from Chief Cogburn. He's been a mentor of mine for many years now, so, thank you.
Hey Darren. Yes, could you have his wife and the, the baby in the picture with us, just for?
Yeah, absolutely. Here you go. Go grab some photos of them.
Well, that's wonderful. Congratulations, Darren, and thank you for your service to our community. Uh, for with that. We do love our firefighters. Uh, with that, we'll move on to the Short Range Transit Plan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Mr. Tree, our Transportation Director, we, we providing a, a short-range transit plan presentation tonight with our consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Redd now. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the community. Like Mr. Redd now said, my name is Rich Tree. I'm the Director of Transportation. And joining me virtually tonight is Gabby and Jeremiah from Fair and Peers, who are consultants tasked with drafting our twenty twenty-five Short Range Transit Plan. And they'll, they are available to answer any questions you might have at the end of the presentation. I had no idea this many people were passionate about our Short Range Transit Plan. I'd love to think that you all came for this presentation. However, since you're here, let's make the most of it. There's a flyer in the back corner with a QR code that you can take our transit survey. Now, you, now's your chance to let us know what you think about public transit. Uh, now to start my presentation, I want to ask you a couple of questions to think about. Have you ever waited for a bus that felt like it would never come? Or taken a ride that made you question if transit was the best option? If so, you're not alone, and that's exactly why we're here tonight. The Short Range Transit Plan, or referred to as acronym of SRTP, is our blueprint, blueprint for making transit better. For some of you, this is, this could be the first time hearing about a Short Range Transit Plan and have no idea what it's about. This is a simple flow chart, what we're doing. We're going to analyze existing services and gather input from the community, which will drive how we apply resources to re, to achieve a return on investment. And then we're going to hold ourselves accountable by measuring our performance. For those that want to know the details and how we're going to execute this plan, we're going to dive into it for the next couple of minutes. But let's take a quick look at what we'll be covering tonight. This will be your roadmap of key points we'll, we'll discuss, and how they all tie together to improve transit in Porterville. So here's what we'll cover. What is an SRTP? Well, that's why it matters. Why do we need it? The challenges we're solving, goals and areas of focus is how we're improving it. And the timeline is what's next. This isn't about creating a report. It's about executing a plan that makes transit better for Porterville. So let's get started. Let's start with the basics. What exactly is a Short Range Transit Plan or SRTP, and why does it matter? Simply put, the Short Range Transit Plan is our five-year game plan to ensure that transit services are safe, reliable, efficient, easy to use, and meet the needs of our community. Now that we know what the Short Range Transit Plan is, let's talk about why it's so important to Porterville. There are two key reasons why we del, develop an, a Short Range Transit Plan. Number one, it's required by the Tulare County Association of Governments to keep us eligible for funding. And second, we're guided by Federal Transit Administration or the FTA's best practices to ensure we're making smart decisions, where we're using real ridership data to improve service. We'll have better service performance by optimizing routes, schedules, and on-time performance to reduce inefficiencies. And we're going to improve, i- i- improve the rider experience, enhancing bus stops, which is an item on, uh, tonight's agenda, providing real-time tracking and making transit a cho, a true choice, not just a last resort. Think about this. Imagine a student who relies on transit to get to class. If their bus is late, it affects their entire day. This plan is about ensuring transit is safe and reliable for the people who depend on it. Now that we understand what the Short Range Transit Plan, why this Short Range Transit Plan is essential, let's talk about specific goals we're aiming to achieve. This plan is about making sure services run efficiently, serve the right areas, and provide the best value for both riders and the city. To make this happen, this study focused on three important goals. I call them the Transit Trifecta. Number one, identify community, community needs, understanding where people travel and what's missing. Number two, assessing how the current system performs. Are we running the right services? And number three, develop the best strategies for impact, ensuring every investment provides the highest return for riders and the city. Every recommendation in this plan is about aligning tram, transit services with community needs, improving efficiency, and maximizing the value of our investments. Now let's talk about how we're going to achieve them. First and foremost, the plan is built on input from the people who actually use the system, riders, businesses, community members, and the transit operators. If we want a transit system that works for everyone, we need to listen to the people who depend on it most. The second area of focus is understanding exactly how our current transit system is performing. Taking a deep dive into data, we can ensure that every service improvement is based on real-world demand and efficiency. Finally, once we have community input and system data, we focus on planning smarter, more cost-effective services. Now let's look at exactly how we're reaching out and gathering input from the people who rely on our transit system every day. The best decisions come from listening to the people who use the system, who operate the system, and who rely on it for their daily lives. That's why we're ensuring everyone has a voice in shaping our transit through surveys and public meetings. That provides us direct community input. Our operators and rider feedback, this gives us firsthand experience from those on the ground. And we're also going to use social media and digital, digital outreach to try to reach the younger generation. And we've also been, uh, contemplating, which I think is really exciting, potentially a transit podcast, where we're connecting with millennials and Gen Z in a format that they already engage with. This isn't just about what we think is best. It's about making sure transit truly serves our community. Engaging with the community is crucial, but engagement alone isn't enough. We also need to analyze the services we provide to truly understand how our transit system is performing. We're analyzing the system through three lenses. Ridership and travel patterns, which are, are the buses serving the right areas? A market assessment, assessment, are we meeting community needs? And performance and costs, how can we optimize the service? By tracking passengers per hour, on-time performance, and operating costs, we can ensure that transit investments deliver the highest impact. This is our scorecard. The next step is to use all this information to make smart, financial, financially responsible service decisions. This is where service and financial planning come into play. Or in other words, where the rubber meets the road. We're not just thinking about transit today. We're making sure it's strong enough to serve the city for years to come. That's why we're for focusing on three major priorities. Long-term sustainability, high-performing services, and enhanced customer experience. Transit is investment, and we have a responsibility to ensure that our funding is spent wisely. That's why this plan emphasizes performance-based budgeting, where transit dollars go towards the most effective, highest-impact services. Here's an example. If one route serves fifty riders per hour while another serves five, we're allocating funding to match actual demand, ensuring efficiency without wasting resources. Looking ahead, we're, we've identified a couple areas for future opportunities. Number one, we're calling it the Southern Tulare County feasibility. We're not, uh, joining TC RTA, but we're exploring, exploring opportunities for ru, uh, smaller regional connectivity. What makes sense around the city of Porterville? And possibly, should we be operating those services in a partnership with our regional transit providers? Another one is shared mobility. Bike and scooter sharing, car sharing, and van pools are all, uh, future opportunities. These opportunities represent exciting possibilities for the future for portable transit and the community we serve. A plan is only as good as its execution, so here's the timeline and how we're going to move forward. Right now, we're moving near, right now, we're nearing the end of the existing conditions and needs assessment phase, where we're analyzing ridership trends, service performance, and financial sustainability. We've just begun phase one of our community engagement, where we're, we're meeting with our stakeholders. For example, we just met with the Porterville Adult School last week. Starting in April is phase two of our community engagement, where there's, we're going to receive rider input and then conduct a couple of public meetings. Phase three, we'll look at service and financial planning and drafting recommendations. And phase four, which will happen later this year, is our final plan and city council approval. We're ensuring this plan isn't just talk, it's action. We've covered a lot tonight. What is the SR, what is the short range, what the short-range transit plan is, why it matters, and how we're executing real improvements. With this plan, we can ensure that every rider, whether commuting to work, school, or medical appointments, has access to a system they can count on. Let's make portable transit something we're all proud of. Thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tree. Uh, we'll bring it back to the council. Is there any questions for, uh, Mr. Tree? Uh, start with Councilman Beltran.
I'll just make the quick comment. Um, great report. Um, and I know it's only been about ten months since we, uh, the city has taken on transportation, um, back with local control. And I'm glad, uh, members of the community are for, probably here for other matters, but just so that the, uh, community can see the efforts that Director Tree and staff are working towards. Uh, it's a big undertaking, but you could see all the possibilities that, that we have. Um, it's just, thank you for the very thorough report. Look forward to the community feedback. So I hope as everybody leaves, they scan that QR code and, uh, please participate. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Rivas?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few little comments. Uh, that's a great presentation, Mr. Tree. Well, everybody that's present, this is the future of Porterville and transit, uh, travels. So I encourage you to scan that QR code, make, make a survey. But also, where was this when I was growing up in the east side? I mean, because when I was living in the east side out there by, uh, Foodland, I would pick up the, the Porterville High School bus, and then, at, and then from there, I would walk to Bartlett High, uh, Junior High. So, I mean, think of, thinking of it like now, that, that would be really an asset for me to, to use this and, and for future generations to come. Um, you know, because, I mean, th- this is the future, and I, I think I'm, I'm proud to be part of this. And, uh, where, whenever it started, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about it. And, uh, so with that, I'll turn it over to the, the mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. And just, I, I have some numbers in front of me that you don't, but the highest ridership is the east side Route Three, so just, just to share that with you. It is a, a great resource for our community on the east side of Porterville. Uh, Councilman Green?
No, I, I think Richard, uh, did a great job. I don't have any questions for you at this time, Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Uh, Vice Mayor McCurvy.
Well, you know, growing up on the east side, um, I share your concerns. We, we had to spend all day to get across town back in the day.
Yes, we did.
And, uh, you know, mostly the time we had to walk because our bike tires were flat. It's really great to see this. Uh, we're grown up as a city, and, um, you know, it would have been a nice asset when we were kids, but it, we're, our city is bigger than it was. It's growing now, and, uh, the surrounding communities are coming into our city to, um, work and shop and invest. And we really want to make sure that we make that, um, possible by using our resources smartly. And it looks like we're getting some good ridership. I love that we have this now in-house, and we have a lot of autonomy in our city to be able to tailor the transit and continue to adapt the transit to the needs. So make sure that you're getting that feedback in, in those surveys and providing information, because we can do some seasonal things. We can do some other things. If the community demands in certain areas are different, we'll adapt to that to serve the community better. Thank you very much, Mr. Tree. Well done.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. And I, just from my own input, uh, it is great to have that local control. The former council fought really hard for that, uh, gaining local control. We, we have more abilities to adjust accordingly, like the free ridership that we have now, and which is, we've seen a huge increase in ridership as well. Um, something I would, I would like to talk about, uh, and I know my colleagues don't have the exact information in front of, in front of them like I do, but with Route Six and Route Four being the lowest ridership, is there opportunity to possibly combine the routes or make Route Four take, take, or, excuse me, I'm, I'm mixing this up. Route Three and Route Six to combine together to cover Route Four. Being Route Four is the lowest riding, uh, route in transit.
The short answer is yes, absolutely. We have a lot of options, um, to us. And maybe I might ask, uh, Jeremiah from Fair and Peers to expand on that a little bit more about opportunities on our low ridership routes.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeremiah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks very much for having us this evening. And, um, you know, Rich is absolutely right that, you know, the short answer is yes, we haven't, uh, finished our data analysis yet, as he showed on our timeline, but in addition to possibly combining routes, um, there's some other options we could think about in terms of, um, seasonal adjustments to service so that it's there when people need it the most, but maybe other times of the years that the, those resources are not needed. Um, and I look forward to coming back in a couple of months when we have a little bit better sense for, um, how those things will play out. Um, my colleague Gabby and I were there, uh, in town last week for the day, and, uh, rode actually a couple of those routes to see those, um, circumstances ourselves. So our, our ideas, our, our gears are turning on the idea generation, and we'll have more to say soon.
Thank you for that, Jeremiah, and, uh, that would be my only, I, I know that there's concerns of LTFs, possibly becoming short, and, uh, this, maybe combining these routes, uh, could save some money and ultimately the LTFs go into our roads. So I appreciate that, Jeremiah. Thank you, Mr. Tree. Is there any other questions before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to oral communication. This is an opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Tonight, seeing that we're going to Tonight, seeing that we're going to have a lot of speakers, we're going to limit time to the three minutes, we're going to stick to that, and then we'll go forward from there. So go ahead and start. State your name and address for the record, please.
Somehow.
Can you hear me now?
No, is the mic on? You might have to turn the mic on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you could state your name and address for record, please.
Okay, Sherri Shields, Porterville, California. Is that good enough?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, everybody is equal, including the homeless in this town. I want to know where the million dollars is being allocated for the homeless people, because it is supposed to be a benefit to help the homeless to get transitioned off the streets and not to be rolled out of their beds, which is a blanket of a morning, off the streets. My daughter and I saw it this morning. The police down on this end of town, we just happened to be driving by, and they've got a hold of the blanket and just ripping it out from the guy that was laying there. The shelters that they have down there, like for the National Guard, they're not available, they're not accountable for anything except for a cot. They don't give them a blanket, they don't give them a pillow, they don't give them a shower, they have, they are not allowed to use the toilets that are in those buildings. They have to go outside to the plastic facilities out there to use them. There's no food, there's no snacks, there's nothing for homeless people there. You're getting nothing but a bed. So basically, you're getting the cement out on the ground. They'd rather be on the ground. We have these garbage cans that you all have put up and down the streets, at every bus stop, every transit, the trash cans. There's eight of them out here on this corner over here, you can see them. Have you read what's on those? Just a few items, if you read them. Has anybody read them? Have you council people read them? It says on the trash can, not the recycle one, the trash can, no food, no paper, no green waste, no recyclables. What the heck are you supposed to put in them? The homeless? You need to walk out there and you need to read those trash cans you put out there. And where'd that money come from? Is that homeless money to make everything look good around here, because maybe a homeless might put a recyclable in somewhere that they can't even reach in those things to get them out? Pull down and look at it. I couldn't reach my arm in there. It is ridiculous, the waste of money that gets thrown away, spent, and just thrown away, rather than getting in trouble for saying a nasty word in here. You need to help these homeless people? You need to help get them on the streets? Yes, I'm a mother, but I can't help everybody in the world. I feed homeless people, I try, I watch, I see the police officers now harassing them, picking them up, telling them they're not welcome here. There is no place else. Vine Street has two rooms, fifteen people in each room. That's all they've got. They do give them a meal, but fifteen, thirty people in this town, when there's several thousand that are homeless, doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Sherri.
I have more to say. Thank you much.
Hello, I told you I'd be here, if you got my email.
Your name and address for the record, ma'am?
Caitlin Farmersville. This ordinance, number twenty-four, is all because you want to protect women, but do you really? Because in Farmersville, violent crime rate is four point seven, and in two thousand and twenty-two, women became the target for violent crime, property crime in Farmersville, I mean, Porterville, sorry, fourteen, fifteen point six. And other crimes like kidnapping, which mothers, daughters, and women are the targets, that rate is twenty-five point five percent. Where's the ordinance to protect these women? Eight out of ten rapes are committed by someone the victim knows. Fifty-nine percent were acquaintances, thirty-four percent were family members, half of predators over thirty or older. Fifty-seven percent were predators white. So where's the ordinance to protect women, like, from predators, like old white men like yourselves? Porterville has sixty-six churches in California, a total of seven hundred and fifty-seven religious warriors were accused of sexual assault and rape. So where is the ordinance to protect women in all sixty-six churches in your city? The women that need the most protection in your community is black women, Asian, Pacific Islander women, multicultural women, indigenous, Alaskan Islander women. All right? Also, city council members, can you please stand up for me? Ah, okay, you're not going to stand up. I wish you would, because you're basing this ordinance off of the HHS guidelines that were set under the Trump administration executive orders. So I wanted you to stand up, because I wanted you to drop your pants and show us if you can, how dingling can produce sperm, because under those guidelines, it says a male is a person of sex characteristics by reproductive system with biological function producing sperm. So if none of you can produce sperm, then you obviously are transmen. And don't tell me you have women, don't tell me you have children, because there are turkey basters out there. And also, FYI, now I'm running out of time, to all city council members, and city attorney, this is also for you, you took an oath, right? When you became city council members, and I'm running out of time, so I'm going to take up additional time, just FYI. This ordinance violates Article One.
Thank you, Caitlin.
No, no. Hold on.
Your time's up. Thank you. There's many speaking tonight.
Yes, but you.
Please summarize, Caitlin.
I will. I will summarize.
All right, ten seconds.
This ordinance violates Article One, Section One of the Constitution, Sec. U, and Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, state and United States. And if you vote yes on this, you'll be breaking your oath that you took.
Thank you, Caitlin.
All right?
Thank you.
Which will land you in state penitentiary.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Hello, I'm Evelyn De Medina, and I'm on file, and I am here to, I am the voice of the Santa Fe Senior Apartments Seniors. My plan was not to be up here this evening, but I almost got hit by a car on Platinum and Third this midday. I was walking across the street to go to my dental appointment, and I just wanted to state that when you guys, when the police department does not have the speed trap out there, people are still speeding. They are not stopping for the seniors, and I have experienced that today, going to the dentist and coming back to Santa Fe Apartments. I have people here that are willing to talk, maybe one will talk, and his name is Gilbert. So I want to see if the police department can do something, or city council, we want a four-way stop, a light, or something that's going to help us be safe, not only the seniors, but the care providers as well. Gilbert? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. If you want to give them an extra three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody, new evening. My name is Gilbert. I live over at the Santa Fe, and that is a concern. Right there at the corner, you've got the Second Street Light, and people just fly right through there and not even paying attention to the stop sign there. So you've got cross traffic coming through Platinum and Third, and people are trying to dare, you know, can't do depth perception and speed, so they're trying to anticipate going. In the meantime, my wife and I have had to sit out there and wait for a transit, and a bus stop right there, you see, people just don't even stop. And I literally get off my beach cruiser, and I go over, and I will protect the ladies and gentlemen there, I will protect, you're going to hit me first here, I'm going to save those people from going, because these people, the majority of them will stop, but the majority, the others will just say, you see, and go right on by. They don't even bother. There's just no consideration. And basically, you have to just run out in the middle and sacrifice yourself just to get across, like Evelyn was saying, she almost got hit. And, you know, even with those speed things out there now, I noticed the last week or two weeks they've had them out there, they still don't abide and buy them, and just look at you like you don't exist. I mean, my wife's in a power chair, and she didn't make it tonight because she has real bad arthritis, and we use transit a lot, and waiting there is just, trying to get through is terrible. I mean, I wish people had more consideration for that stop. Now, I don't know what the city can do about it, because like I said, it's right there, just past the Second Street Light. If more people would just have more consideration and put a light out there, like the trail, there's a trail light right there that people use, but even sometimes that's not even safe. Another one's like Olive over there. That bridge over there, that's danger zone. I mean, why even put one there? People try to get across that place, and I almost got hit a couple times. I've seen people go across there, people just come cruising over there doing ninety miles an hour like it's the Indy 500. And they won't wait, that's a dangerous crossing right there. I don't know why it was even implemented. So with that, folks, my only concern was, like I said, for the residents of Santa Fe. My wife and I have been there for nine years, and we've seen accidents come and go and come close. So that'd be real appreciative if we could get together and have some kind of resolve. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Good evening. My name is Jean Vafias. I live here in Porterville, and I want to read something to you. I was here on the twenty-first of one of your meetings, and you heard our coaches and players asked for help with inadequate playing fields for our Little League teams, and the need for a Little League Junior Division for thirteen and fourteen-year-olds. Has that happened? I followed up on this request at your next meeting, February fourth, city council meeting. Why is it that you can find money for banners on these kids' fields that are very costly, I hear around a thousand dollars or more, but you can't fix the fields? And you want to put certain models on those banners instead of something that the children can relate to and inspire them, but you're only wanting to promote your personal, quote, rebranding ideas on banners and city vehicles that will cost thousands of dollars? I just followed a bus here tonight, city bus. It had a logo, City, Porterville, it had an American flag on it. Why do you want to spend thousands of dollars on rebranding buses so that money could go to buy more new buses that don't need to have all these stripes? And what is your goal here? These look ugly, these buses you're proposing. Supposedly, all the members of the city council recently took a vacation down south and then came back with ideas of joining a charter city league with a conservative Huntington Beach City Council. Was any of the city funds used for your vacation? Was this vacation in violation of the Brown Act? I request our city lawyer look into this. On the February eighteenth city council meeting, it was brought up by the Porterville citizens with ties to our local airport, that you were about to raise their fees at the airport without any input from those affected. Many of the citizens did not even receive proper notice in advance of February eighteenth meeting. In fact, some found out that morning. Then late in February eighteen city council meeting, you bring up considering women's safe spaces ordinance that will adversely and likely illegally affect the rights of the LGBTQ community. Porterville city council members, you are responsible for working for all of us. You appear to be working for a certain limited political agenda. Why? I'd like Fernando to please to give us the city lawyer. There's twice now I've asked for requests from them. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
My name is Ashley Olivas. I would just like to introduce myself. I have the honor and privilege of representing Assemblywoman Macedo of Assembly District Thirty-three, and I asked Fernando to hand out my business cards this evening. If there's anything that our office can do or assist, we are more than happy to help and bridge that gap and keep up the good work, city council members, and God bless.
Thank you, Ashley.
My name is Alex C. I was assigned female at birth, but as you can see, I am a man. The ordinance you're considering would force my eleven-year-old niece to share a restroom with her tio or her uncle, something that's super confusing and unnecessary. I shouldn't have to accept, I should not have to accept policies that compromise my safety, my dignity, and my privacy just to appease a political or ideological agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Hello, I'm JL Brown. I'm from Pixley in Porterville. Porterville City Council is engaging in a systemic attack against marginalized groups, utilizing the city council to air out their personal grievances with certain minority communities. Greg Meister likes to spend his time spreading easily disprovable conspiracy theories on Fox Twenty-Six. I just want to do a few fact checks here. Ameen Kalev is not a transgender woman. Another fact: less rapes and sexual assaults happen in cis and trans-integrated bathrooms. That is a fact. Fact: the law set forward restricting trans minors in sports would allow precedent for teachers and school staff to perform genital inspections on your schoolchildren. Fact: there are zero trans athletes competing in Porterville schools. Another fact: in high school sports nationwide, as of January seventeen, twenty twenty-five, there are only fifteen trans athletes participating in high school sports. Just to end it off, Greg Meister openly lied to every single one of his constituents on Fox Twenty-Six. I have zero faith in his and the rest of the council's ability to litigate local law. I feel the way mayors are chosen, not elected by the people, chosen to systemically destroy the rights and freedoms of not only the American citizens at large, but children, the most vulnerable in our society.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
I'm Maura Hill, Porterville. At the beginning, you asked God to forgive you and to help you reconcile with your sins, and I hope one day you will truly see the irony in that. Despite claims against it, this ordinance clearly feels like a threat to our local trans community. Not only are trans people, who are simply trying to live their lives, are put under threat of fines, but any cis person who does not meet expectations of a stereotypical man or woman can be drawn into question. This reprehensible act comes straight from Mayor Greg Meister, who has stated prior, created this not because he was asked by his concerned citizens, nor because trans people using public restrooms is an issue currently plaguing the city, but because it was an issue he wanted to get ahead of. Why are we wasting time, energy, and money fighting a non-existent problem, especially when we have pressing issues affecting the city? East Porterville famously has no running water. Our homelessness rates have doubled since two thousand and thirteen, and I've seen zero action from our local council. The excuse given to us for the creation of this law is that it's meant to protect the women and children of the city. If Mayor Greg Meister legitimately cared for women and children, he wouldn't loudly proclaim his support for a man that dozens of women have claimed sexually assaulted them. So I ask the council, and Greg Meister specifically, are you willing to continue to uphold hateful rhetoric, even if that means making Porterville the laughingstock of the Central Valley?
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I'm Dr. Catherine Hall. I'm a resident of Lindsay since nineteen seventy-eight. I practiced pediatrics in Lindsay and then visalia from nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand and twenty-one, during which time I saw many patients from Porterville. Some of my patients were intersex, some of my patients were transgender. I've been interested in intersex and transgender issues and have had extensive continuing medical education on LGBTQIA folks. My seventeen years with PFLAG, a support group, has also taught me a lot about LGBTQ+ folks. The proposed ordinance and proclamation, they are misleading, unnecessary, and harmful. No transgender person presents a risk to others in a bathroom. There are no cases of women being assaulted by trans women in bathrooms. It does not happen. And in a women's restroom, no sexual parts are visible. No one sees anything private. So the rationale for this ordinance and the proclamation does not exist. However, transgender people, particularly trans women, particularly trans women of color, are at risk from cisgender people. At least thirty-six transgender people were were killed violently in this country from November of twenty twenty-three to November of twenty twenty-four. Transgender men and women are more than four times more likely to be victims of violence than cisgender people. The effects of this ordinance would be to require trans men, who are often bearded, bald, bulked up, to use women's restrooms. They would not be a threat to anyone in there, but the women may perceive them as a threat, which could result in risk to both. And trans women would be forced to use a men's restroom where they would be at significant risk. This ordinance would create unnecessary anxiety for cisgender women, an actual risk for both trans women and trans men. Another risk of this ordinance is that it creates the false idea that transgender people are dangerous. Transphobia is being exploited to pass laws taking away rights from transgender people who generally just want to use the restroom best suited to their gender expression. This ordinance also denies the reality of intersex people. Biology is way more complicated than people realize, and biologic female and biologic male can be meaningless terms. All people have a biologic need for access to a restroom for health reasons. Please do not pass this ordinance or this proclamation. It is not needed and will cause harm.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Fernanda, she has documented. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Hello. My name is Kate. I am from Woodlake. I am a concerned citizen, but I also happen to be transgender. I'm not here to scold you or make you feel inferior. But I am here to ask you to please consider people like me. Please do not pass this policy as it would make it more dangerous for people like me. Trans and gender expansive folks who just need to use the restroom to do so safely. This issue impacts not only me, but my community. Trans women, trans men, non-binary folks, and yes, even gender, non-conforming cisgender folks. Yes, I said scary words, cisgender, transgender. What are you afraid of? That we're going to harass people in the bathroom? Believe me when I say the only thing that we're doing in these bathrooms is using them. One and two. Maybe three if I had Taco Bell, okay? What? More and more transgender people are attacked and harassed every year just for using the restroom. This ordinance would be very dangerous to us. We have the right to use a restroom without being isolated and discriminated against. This proposed policy goes against our fundamental rights, human rights, to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I recommend that you check your prejudices instead of focusing on and focus on doing right by your local trans community by not passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Hello again. My name is Maria. I am from Farmersville. As a parent for the last seventeen years, I have lots of memories of little boys following their mothers into the women's restroom. It was never an issue then, and it isn't an issue now. The restroom is a necessity for anyone regardless of their gender and their identity. Stan, you seem a little bit bored. Do I have your attention? Thank you. As a parent of a trans child, I am comfortable with them. I am not comfortable with them using a bathroom for the gender that they were assigned to at birth. I fear for my child's safety every day, not due to trans people, but incompetent people who feel it is their duty duty to dictate who uses the bathroom. Why are you so concerned about what is in strangers' pants? Seems as if you guys are the weirdos, not us. Thank you. In conclusion, the bathroom is not a place for politics. It is a place for shits. Thank you. May Satan be with you.
Thank you, Maria.
Hi, my name is Bethany. I am from Porterville. Uh, the proposal to tie facility access to observable gender is performative hatred for political clout. This is illegal under state law. It's unenforceable. Unless you intend to station someone in the restroom to perform genitalia check, it is absolutely unenforceable. You cannot tell what gender a person is by glancing. What you can do is empower harassment. You can allow people and encourage people to bother others. You can encourage them to infringe upon their rights. That's what this ordinance does. You've said you wanted to protect women. This is discrimination sanctioned and encouraged by our local government. Women don't need protection from transgender people. We need protection from fascism. We need protection from the attacks on our bodily autonomy pushed by the Republican Party. We need protection from you. Women are not a shield for your fucking bigotry. We do not owe you performative feminism. We do not owe you a traditional aesthetic. This proposal violates state law. It encourages harassment of a marginalized community. It is unenforceable. You know all of that. You know every single bit of that. This is not news. This is what you do. Stop the meaningless rhetoric and pretense. People have brought up many things today that are actionable. Porterville has needs. Porterville residents need things that you could do. You can make a positive impact. And instead, you're wasting your time, our time, and taxpayer money on this farce. Do your job.
Thank you, Bethany.
Good evening. My name is Reed Lowry. I'm from Porterville, California. Um, and I am a member of the LGBTQ plus community. Um, and I am an ally for trans citizens. I am up here tonight to voice my concerns towards the harmful bathroom policy created by Mayor Meister and how this is not protection for women, but an attack on the trans community. I would like to bring up the LA Times article by Noah Goldberg from February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, in which he states when referring to Mayor Meister. Um, he said that no one, including women's rights groups, approached him about the ordinance, which he came up with on his own. Um, he also said that there has been no instances in Porterville of transgender women using their preferred restrooms. Um, he said that he does not know if any transgender people live in Porterville and that he had no trans friends. So with that being said, how can you claim that this decision is meant to protect women when it is not an issue brought to you by a women's organization at the time of its creation? Furthermore, there is no record of trans people posing a threat when it comes to using their restroom of choice. Do not sit up here and hide behind women's rights as a straight white male and when your actions are clearly meant to harm a community that has never asked for anything but peace and acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Randy Evans, and I've actually been asked to speak tonight on behalf of the chairman of the Tulare County Democratic Central Committee. Um, I'll be reading his statement here. Good evening, Mayor Meister, members of the city council, fellow Tulare County residents. I stand before you today on behalf of the Democrats of Tulare County in opposition to the proposed proclamation recognizing women's rights in Porterville. Not because I propose the principles of equity or value of women in our community, but because I believe that such a proclamation is unnecessary, divisive, and ultimately symbolic without any meaningful impact. First and foremost, our city government should focus on matters that directly impact our local community in a tangible way. Economic development, public safety, infrastructure, and essential services. Proclamations like this, while well-intentioned, do little beyond serving as a political statement that can be, that can create unnecessary division among our residents. Porterville is a community that thrives on unity, collaboration, and singling out specific groups for recognition risks alienating others. Furthermore, the concept of women's rights as presented in this proclamation is vague and undefined. Women in our country already enjoy full rights and protections under the law, including voting, equal opportunity employment, and access to education. If there are specific legal or policy issues affecting women in Porterville, then those concerns should be addressed through actionable policies, not symbolic gestures that do not translate into real change. Additionally, this proclamation could set a precedent by which the council is continuously asked to recognize various social and political movements leading to an unnecessary politicalization of city governments. The role of this city council should be to serve all residents fairly, without favoring one group over another through public declarations that do not serve a functional purpose. Instead of symbolic proclamations, let's commit to actual policies and programs that benefit all citizens, women included, by focusing on economic opportunities, small business support, job training, and public safety. If the goal is true empowerment, then let's take, uh, take action in ways that truly make a difference, rather than issuing statements that serve no practical purpose. For these reasons, I urge the city council to vote against this proclamation and instead focus on policies that will provide real benefits to all residents of Porterville. Thank you. Signed Joshua Evans, Chair Tulare County Democratic Central Committee. I do have a copy of the letter for your file. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Hello, my name is Erica, and I'm speaking on behalf of Porterville trans youth who prepared a statement, um, and I will be reading that. Trying to implement the bathroom ban is an invasion of multiple human rights, including privacy and equality. It's blatant discrimination not to allow transgender individuals to use the restroom that aligns with their gender identity. You, Mr. Mayor, stated that you do not know if any transgender people live in Porterville. Then what's the point of the ban? You're targeting a minority that you don't even know or that you didn't even know was in the city. You claim the ban is to protect women, yet no one, not even women's rights groups, asks you to do this. If you actually cared about women's safety, then ask women what would make them feel safer? What would make them not fear walking alone at night? What would make them feel safe enough to report domestic violence or stalking or assault or anything else that you're currently failing to protect them from? If you cared about women's safety, you would do more than solve, uh, local problems and not just, I'll do what everyone else is doing and target a minority of people who just want to live their life. Transgender people are not the problem. Respect our existence or expect our resistance. Um, and we have many youth, uh, who didn't feel safe enough to speak tonight because of the people in this room, and I'm happy to elevate their voices. But you should listen to the youth affected at the school level, at the youth sports level. This is just impractical. Um, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Good evening to the city of Porterville and to the city council. My name is Matthew Aquino. I grew up in Springville and currently live in Porterville. And I work at a high school in town, and I'm here to talk about the transgender ban, ban on restrooms, locker rooms, and sports teams. Personally, I didn't know much of anything about trans people fifteen years ago. But in that timeframe, conservatives have decided that a demographic that makes up less than two percent of our population deserves to be elevated to a national issue. Because of this, I decided to learn everything I could about the transgender issue, and what I found is that there is no issue. Here are some facts we should all know. Sex and gender are different. Sex is biological, while gender is a social construct. There is no disputing this. This is scientific fact. I would love for anyone who disagrees to talk to me because it is so easy to prove. All it takes is common sense. Concerning biological sex, most people don't know that sex isn't a binary matter. It is bimodal. This means that while the vast majority of people are male or female, there's also a spectrum in between. It's not just XX or XY. People can be XXY, XYY, XXX, just X, as well as other possibilities. This is all biological fact. Anytime you claim there are only two sexes, you are being anti-science. But maybe you hear that and you think, oh, those intersex people are a statistical anomaly. But the reality is, we have as many intersex people on this planet as we do natural redheads. About two percent of people are intersex. Intersex people also often aren't aware that they are intersex. For all we know, any one of our city council members might be intersex. So if this bathroom ban is supposed to draw clean lines between male and female bathrooms, how do we factor intersex people into this? It's not like we're going to police chromosomes. So let's not pretend this trans bathroom ban is about following biological sex or sticking to science. It's doing the opposite. But what about sports? Some people here might believe that female sport's being dominated by trans athletes, but this is a lie. You've been lied to. There's a reason why a trans athlete winning a random track meet at a high school in Maine makes national news. It's all blown out of proportion. We don't hear about the times the trans athletes take fourth, fifth, sixth, or last place. We don't hear about the trans athletes weren't good enough to make varsity. Yes, trans athletes will win sometimes, but that's expected. Sometimes people win, whether they are trans or not. And really, if you want to talk about genetic differences impacting sports, we can talk about that without even mentioning trans people. Genetics leads to things like more upper body strength, better hand-eye coordination, higher lung capacity. Those are biological differences that lead to huge advantages in sports. What about height? Someone who's six and a half feet tall would likely have an easier time playing basketball than someone who's a five and a half feet. Heck, Michael Phelps is genetically part fish. Isn't that a considerable biological advantage? I wish I could go longer, but I have limited time. The point of all this is that people who are worried and scared of the transgender issue don't have all the facts. We have to accept that if we don't know enough about something, then perhaps we shouldn't be enacting sweeping rulings on it. I hope that the city councils has the necessary humility and introspection to realize that they are way out of their element here. They're creating fake problems to focus on ignoring the real harm it will be causing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Okay, hello. My name is Michelle Aquino. I'm a licensed clinical social worker who has been mental health field for over twelve years now. I've worked in multiple schools, community clinics in California, Washington, even the criminal justice system as a forensic therapist. I recently moved back to my roots, and I am a currently clinical therapist serving the Porterville community. Oddly enough, twelve years ago, I was standing right here speaking in defense of the LGBT community. It is very disappointing to come back here and realize we are in the exact same fight twelve years later. Let's be transparent, shall we? This ordinance is not about keeping women safe and children safe. It's about being afraid of what you have not bothered to try to understand. In my line of work, I have had multiple patients in the transgendered community. I have heard their desires, their fears, and their hardships. They, like everyone else, desire happiness, love, and acceptance. This ordinance is trying to make a claim that trans, a trans person will choose to go through years of hormones, possible surgeries, changing their name, coming out to their families, and facing discrimination, all because they want to evoke harm in a restroom. If a person wants to harm a woman in a restroom, they don't need a change to do it. There's not a bouncer at the door. Mayor, you said women have fought for equality, and it's not fair that a biological man jeopardize their rights. The irony is, there's zero evidence of data showing an increase in safety concerns allowing transgender people to use the preferred bathroom. In fact, transgender people are over four times more likely than cisgender people to experience violent behavior. As someone who is certified in trauma therapy, I've been on the other side of the couch. I have heard stories in one day that you guys couldn't fathom hearing in a lifetime. And I can tell you one thing, every abuse person that I've talked to, their abuser is all the same, a cisgendered man. Has this council really not progressed since I last stood here twelve years ago? I encourage you to look into what you have failed to understand with a different lens and ask yourself, what are you really afraid of?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandy, and I am a born and raised Tulare County citizen. And just to put it out there, I am a straight woman with the vagina that I was still born with. But I am a very strong ally of the trans community. Not only do I have many friends in the trans community, I have worked with many people in the trans community. I have even had roommates and shared a bed with that roommate, and I never once felt afraid of what could or might happen. But you want to know when I do feel afraid? Is when I'm walking through a parking lot, sometimes going into a restroom, going through, walking across my school campus at night. But I'm not afraid of trans. I am afraid of straight men because they are the ones that we need the protection from. And I have had many friends who have, I've known before and after their transition. And they are the kindest people who only want to live as they truly feel inside, which is nobody else's business. We can't even comprehend what it feels like to live in a body that we do not feel like is what we are meant to be in. Have some compassion for these people. We've already had a lot of people go over through statistics right now. So I would just like to point out that, again, while there are no no records of any men sexually assaulting a woman in a restroom by pretending he was a woman or transgender, it is definitely a problem, including with transgender people and non-binary youth. And after a recent survey, while most of them were too scared to go into restrooms, there are reports of being harassed. or reports of being harassed, or picked on, or kicked out, or even arrested, many of them avoided drinking and eating to avoid using public restrooms, resulting in many reporting urinary tract infection, kidney infection, or any other kidney-related problem because they're avoiding using a restroom for fear of being called out and fear of being attacked or sexually assaulted. So at the end of the day, what would actually make a woman feel safer would be for you to ask us, what would make a woman? Have you asked any woman in this room what would make her feel safer? Or if this is something that she is concerned about? Because I guarantee you, the majority will say no. What would make a woman feel safer would be to actually hold people who commit sexual assault and rapes against women and people in general stronger conviction rates. That means making sure that Tulare County prosecutors actually prosecute the crimes, the police department actually does their job, the judge hands down the appropriate sentencing instead of a light sentence with the phrase, "We don't want to ruin his life" tacked on. That does not make a woman feel safe. And at the end of the day, this begs the question, is this proposed ordinance really about women's safety? Or is it about your personal?
Please summarize, Randy.
Or possibly your political showboat to get you re-elected, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alexis Espinoza from Porterville. Can you hear me okay?
Say that again.
Alexis Espinoza from Porterville. Better?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, you guys. It's a rough one tonight, I see. I'm here to speak about tonight's consideration of establishing an ordinance regarding women's safe spaces and consent calendar item number 15. Excuse me, 15. Hi, my fellow gay community. I'm happy to see that they're all here tonight. There's a lot of anger in this room and obviously that's understandable. As a member of the LGBTQ+ community, I do not agree with the entire concept of the ordinance but can understand why specific members of this council would want to discuss it. It for sure feels like a push for a personal political agenda. While I acknowledge that this is not up for approval tonight and must still go through a public hearing process, if this ordinance were to pass, how would you, as the city, be able to implement it into our public schools as proposed? Public schools are not city-funded. Should that not be a decision made by the school boards? There are full boards of people in this community elected specifically to make the best decisions for our city's students. Just because you don't agree with it and are in a position of perceived power does not mean that you can overstep your reach. Not everybody has raised their children to believe in the same things that you do. You should leave public school decisions to their respective elected boards. In section seven of this drafted ordinance, the nondiscrimination clause, it reads, "It", being the ordinance, "does not prohibit businesses, schools, or government entities from offering additional single occupancy accommodations." If single occupancy accommodations are not already readily available on the school's campus layout, how would you, as a city council, be able to implement that? The school board, not you, would end up having to make those decisions. I do not believe you, as a city council, have the authority to force any of our school boards' hands in doing so. As to item number 15, the amendments to the library's rules of conduct, I'm obviously in support of this. We need to make the library as safe as we can for everyone in the community because that's what it's supposed to be. I visit the library often and when I looked at some of the rules of conduct, I was shocked to see that some of the things listed as unacceptable behavior, where what I assume to most who enter the library would be unacceptable in general, including depositing bodily fluids on property, including library collections, equipment, and furnishings. It is disappointing that these things have to be in a literal black and white for the library staff and patrons to feel safe. However, the addition of rule number 24 is welcome. I have been there when, at different times throughout the last few months, and each time there is often little space left on the table being occupied by five or maybe six people. It can be intimidating to want to sit or even browse the furthest shelves of books when there is an overwhelming amount of stuff or people centralized in that one space. Though it is not their responsibility, maybe the library can think about finding a small dedicated space near the front of the facility in which people who are uncomfortable leaving their belongings outside can leave their belongings under some security, with limits, of course. Thank you for your time and consideration and I look forward to hearing your discussions during tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Alexis.
Anne Marie Waxstaff, 382 North Indiana Street. I am concerned that the council is engaged tonight in one of the oldest human patterns, a pattern generally referred to as scapegoating. It happens often in groups and most of us are likely at one time or another to have participated in it. A group selects a person or subset of a group to blame for whatever conflicts have arisen among its members. They join in attacking that person or subgroup, oftentimes driving them out. In pragmatic terms, groups scapegoat in order to make peace in a way that distracts human attention from deeper unresolved conflict and guilt. But do you know the origin of the word scapegoat? It derives from a passage in the Book of Leviticus as part of God's instruction on what should take place on Israel's Day of Atonement. On that day, a live goat receives on its head the sins of the people and then that goat is sent out into the wilderness, carrying those sins with it. Tonight, the identified scapegoats are transgender and non-binary persons. They certainly did not seek this conflict, nor have they caused any problem in our city. They're a small and vulnerable group, easily targeted, demonized, and then scapegoated. But one has to ask, if we start down this path, who will be next? What is the conflict we cannot resolve and why do we need distractions? Now, I have very ambiguous feelings about the city's motto, "In God We Trust." There are those who feel excluded by those words and I'm not comfortable with that. But more deeply, my ambivalence springs from the burden and responsibility the motto places on our community. Those words come with consequences. There is no place in the Bible that suggests those words can be taken lightly. And certainly, there is no place in the Bible that suggests that those words should ever be used as a cover for one's own agenda. But when I read the proposed letter of support for the mayor and city of Huntington Beach, what I see is a personal agenda. And so I ask this council, how can you, on behalf of all of us living in Porterville, pledge your allegiance to a city aligned with an agenda that may, down the road, harm many in our community? Is that allegiance not a form of idolatry? And so I ask the council and me to take very seriously the city's motto, "In God We Trust," because those words do come with grave responsibilities and grave consequences. Remember that God is God. God is not you. God is not me. God is not us. God is God.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, staff. Chris Shaw, Porterville, California. Address is on record. I'm here to be put on record regarding the renewal of airport lease that was encouraged to be done for people that have had leases that have been waiting to be renewed. One in particular, and I'm not here to object that lease, do not hinder it, do not keep it from going forward, but there is verbiage in it that will affect me. I have a business out there at the airport that will affect me and potentially the future whoever might want to buy my building. So get this straight, no objection to her lease. I'm just concerned that this lease agreement that was drafted is going to set a precedence that could, you know, do some harm here. So one of the points here that has been of an issue with the proposed draft that was proposed back in February 18th was, you know, about taking your property, reversion on your property when the lease was done. So in this new lease draft, which is basically a modified one that has been used for me and my lease for the lot number nine, and it's been tweaked, and I can understand it's been tweaked for maybe some modern stuff that needs to be put into it, but here's one that is pretty crazy. Under the term, notwithstanding the stated term of the lease, "The city may terminate this lease at its pleasure and repossess the premises therein described upon three months' notice thereof and upon paying to the leasing the market value of any improvements made or put upon said premises by the leasing. And the market value of such improvements shall be determined by a board of appraisers." The staff would have one, the city would have one, and then my individual. So basically, that just gives me a 90-day notice that at the city's pleasure, they can cancel my lease and then I'm out. So that's kind of a take and a grab of your property. Also, in this new lease, it doesn't give us an option to extend the lease for another whatever term. And that's kind of an issue because if I was to sell or something like that, who's going to want to buy my stuff?
Mr. Shaw, please leave your information with city staff and then maybe you can get in communication with them, okay?
And then just five seconds.
Go ahead.
So because I didn't know who to go to to talk about this and because this has kind of all been rushed and put together this last minute, that's why I'm bringing it here so I can be on record. And then one other thing, when a building is being sold, why is the dollar amount included on the bill of sale? It shouldn't be.
Please leave your information with staff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cory Bly. I'm a concerned citizen of Tulare County. I'm also with Viselia, the president of With Viselia. If this ordinance is put in place, it will have a detrimental effect not only on Porterville but surrounding counties. I would like to begin with LA Times article dated February 21st, 2025, written by Noah Goldberg. Meister agreed that his ordinance was part of a national trend and not based on local issues. He said that no one, including women's group, approached him about the ordinance, which he came up with on his own. He also said that there had been no instances in Porterville of transgender women using their preferred restrooms. He said he did not know of any transgender people living in Porterville and had no trans friends. I would like to recommend to Mr. Meister to get yourself a trans friend. This will help educate you on trans issues and you won't fall for trends. Back to the article. Despite the fact that the issue has not come up in Porterville, Meister said he wanted to confront it before it became an issue. Listen, far before any of us in this room was a twinkle in their parents' eye and the parents before them, and for thousands of twinkles, transgender people have existed. Full stop. What you are doing is fearmongering. With your fabricated pearl clutching, claiming you're protecting women and children, this town would not be much safer, would be much safer, if we banned cis men from all bathrooms. Since they are the number one threat to women and children, this is an actual issue and it can be handled right now. Greg Meister, Ed McCurvy, A.J. Rojas, Rivas, you signed on to this ordinance. We all know this ordinance is not about protecting safe spaces for women and children. You three men are not clever or original. Following trends is no way to run a city. I want to thank you for this opportunity to really get to know what kind of men you have shown yourselves to be, fragile and fearmongering, and you will not divide us. Trans rights are human rights.
Thank you, council. John Coffey, contact information is on record. Not since 2011 have I been so embarrassed being a resident of this city, and I've lived here my entire life. I'm 78 years old. You're hunting for a problem that needs to be solved. There is no problem. You should all be ashamed of yourselves for signing on to this proposal. The other thing is, I understand that this evening, we're going to be considering a resolution proposed by a group, quote-unquote "group," out of Strathmore. If they have a problem and they need a resolution, they should go to their item of jurisdiction, the county board of supervisors. They have no business coming here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey.
Can we get Rivas off his phone?
I'm researching something.
Please, just go with the comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Tid and I'm a resident of Tulare County. And I wanted to come here tonight to share my voice for the support of the transgender community and to speak out against the proposed ordinance that's to protect women's safe spaces. Transgender inclusive policies are not a safety risk. Law enforcement officials and sexual assault advocates in states and cities that already have trans-inclusive policies in place have said over and over, the claim that these policies cause safety problems is absurd and completely false. This ordinance will not protect anyone's privacy. Everyone wants privacy in the bathroom, so we all use it for the same reason. We do our business, we wash our hands, and leave. Stall doors provide a barrier for privacy, and if there's a need beyond that, we can have productive and respectful conversations for improvement without making it about transgender people. Everyone needs to feel safe. Transphobia is the bigger threat here. That and the potential for someone in authority or taking the authority to try to enforce this ordinance. This ordinance will present problems to make people less safe. What is a person to do if they are a transgender man, assigned female at birth, who presents physically as a man? Are women and girls going to feel comfortable and safe if that man comes into the women's restroom? Are more masculine-looking women or just women in general going to be harassed and challenged by an authority making accusations, demanding proof? How will this be enforced? Genitalia inspections? Before enacting this ordinance, please do some research and try to understand gender identity. Try and understand real threats to women and girls. Spend your time on solving legitimate problems and improving the lives of everybody in the community. Inclusion is a good thing, the healthy thing, the moral thing, the loving and kind thing to do. If it's not inclusion, it's oppression. Please don't join the efforts to ostracize a vulnerable community just because they are different than the norm that you've become accustomed to. Especially at this crazy time, especially in our local communities, we need to come together, not drive more division. Lead by example and treat others, all others, all human beings with dignity and respect. Some things should not and cannot be legislated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa.
I'm Shawna Williams. I'm a resident of Lindsay and I've worked in Porterville for eight years. I would just like you to know that this ordinance does not make me feel safer in bathrooms. I have no concerns about sharing a bathroom with trans women. And I am really concerned about how members of the community are going to respond if they are fearful of people being in their bathrooms with them. I, like other members of this community, I am afraid that there is going to be harassment, assault of trans people who are just trying to use the restroom. And I would really like to see the city council focus on protecting the LGBTQ community and other marginalized communities as our government is trying to further oppress them. Thank you.
Brock Neely, address on record. Just for your education, what you're receiving is California Civic Code 51, better known as the UNRUE Civil Rights Act. Your ordinance blatantly violates that. I've had conversation with Rob Bonta already. He's waiting. He's got the filings already written. You're going to cost this city a whole bunch of money if you pass this. The other thing you're wasting a whole bunch of money on is all this "in God we trust" crap on the buses. They're already branded. You don't need that on there. There are others, other than just your God, there's Buddha, there's the Quran, and Allah. They- They have equal rights here too. This is not a theocracy. If you want a theocracy, go to the Middle East. The other thing is, if Ms. Lou helps you with this, she's probably going to face disbarment. Yes, I said the nasty word.
Please direct your comments to the council.
How much money and staff time are you going to waste on this crap? There are things that need to be taken care of in this city and not putting all this "in God we trust" crap and banning people from using restrooms. Of all the five of you, there's only one there I would really consider a Christian, that man right there. He actually walks the walk.
Thank you, Mr. Neely.
Good evening, my name is Roxanne. I am moving to Porterville. I grew up in Porterville. I left in two thousand and ten. I am a U.S. veteran of six years, and I just want to state that this does not protect women whatsoever. I didn't hear any veterans come up here, so I thought I'd be the representation for that. And so I just want to say that as a woman veteran, next to other males that have fought, it doesn't make anything safer bringing this ordinance to light. There are so many people that are loved and cherished and family members of different Porterville members, and then maybe have a beer or so and see what commonalities you have, because this is just ridiculous and an absolute waste of government funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Hi, Council. My name is Barry Kaplan from here in Tulare County. First, as a matter of procedure, I want to ask you to pull number seventeen from the consent calendar, so your vote will be on the record, each individually. Thank you. Now, I want to, I want, I want to stand in solidarity with everybody that spoke to you about number twenty-four and twenty-five, but please assume that, but I want to tell you a story of a personal experience about my time in a, what you call a personal space, in a gym, in a locker room, that was shared with different genders. I was on a business trip in Japan, and it was a holiday. I didn't, here, I didn't have to come back for a few days, a long weekend. I decided to stay in Osaka. And that night, that Friday night, in dinner, at dinnertime near a train station, I met some guys, college age guys, that were carrying around the crosssticks, a sport that I'm affiliated with. And I know my school, the alumni group had spent some effort to set up Japanese teams and colleges in Japan. And so I asked these guys, I stopped to them, I talked to them, and they were excited to meet me. They invited me to their practice the next day, and I decided to go. I didn't have other plans. And they said, oh, you can be our coach. Well, I didn't know what that's going to mean, but, but I went. I didn't have gym clothes or anything. I was on a business trip. They said, well, we got stuff for you when we got there. And so we were in the room where they changed. It looked like what I might have considered a student union. There were lockers, and there were windows, all on three sides, floor to ceiling, and there were about twenty guys there, and there was about five women that were part of the squad too. And everybody changed there. Everybody. It was them, it was me, we changed, and just like you change in any locker room. We went, we had the practice, I showed them a few things. I hope that was helpful in teaching them how to play the sport a little bit. And then after an hour and a half or so, we went back, and it was time to shower. And we went back to the same room, we got our clothes out of the locker. There was a locker, there was a shower area, with a big central area, and there was a bunch of shower stalls with curtains, and inside, there was a little sitting area to get dressed and undressed. And so everybody, the men and women, they went in their stall, they closed the shower curtain, they got showered, and they got dressed, and they came out of the shower curtain. And then about ten of the men and women took me out for lunch and tourist day to the best that their student budgets could. It was a wonderful day. And nothing happened. Nobody was afraid, nobody had anything to fear. It's just a, it's a cultural matter that's your concern. It's not a human thing to have the deep concerns that you have. I've been coming here for seventeen years with this city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Please summarize.
Yeah, I will be back every single time. So I'm asking you to postpone this until you get a legal opinion about what it's going to cost your city, and have that come back as a matter of information before you even vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff that's here tonight. My name is Russell Bencourt. I live in Springville, California. I'm just letting you know that I am an LGBTQ plus ally. A California study found that transgender people are at higher risk of experiencing violence than cisgender people. A UCLA study found that transgender people are more likely to be violently attacked than cisgender people. A Williams Institute study found that transgender people are over four times more likely to be victims of violent crime than cisgender people. Studies also have found that transgender people had significantly higher odds of sexual assault than both cisgender men and women. So the question is, does this recent bathroom bill or women's and girls' safe places protect girls and women from sexual predators? A sociologist, C. Roy, C. Roy Barick, shows how contrary to popular belief, gender segregated public restrooms do not keep women safe from violence. Sexual violence perpetrated by cisgender men against girls and women occurs at an epidemic rate in the United States. One in five cisgender women will be raped at some point in their lives. This is compared to the one in seventy-one times that a cisgender man is going to be raped. What about transgender people? Transgender people are one in two. Fifty percent of them will be sexually assaulted during their lifetime. This is the one thing I want you all to remember. We, because I did too, swore an oath to the Constitution of the United States. I never swore an oath to a president that was convicted of sexual assault. We also have to remember what history has shown us, not just in the United States, but we remember Hitler. Hitler segregated people, and history doesn't look kindly on that, does it? Safety for everyone should be of the most importance. The ordinance to protect women in safe places should be scrapped. It should include safe places for everybody that lives in the city of Porterville or visits the city of Porterville. I want to thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Russell.
My name is Benjamin. I am new here. I'm from Ventura, Southern California. This is honestly my, my first city council meeting, and I'm honestly confused. I don't know why I'm here. I don't know, I don't want to be here. Nobody wants to be here. If you think that the LGBTQ community are here because they want to raise hell, you're out of your mind. They want to just live their lives and use a toilet and get on with their day. It's such a ridiculous and strange thing that we're fighting for, but it's only ridiculous and strange because you're making it that way. The only thing that isn't ridiculous and strange is clear as hell, and is the number one thing the majority of the people in this room can all agree on, is that you guys are the epitome of history repeating itself. Less than one percent of the human population being targeted by people like you, people who think they're powerful, but really are people who simply stand on our shoulders and call themselves tall. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Martha Flores, address on file. It is without reservation, I address you this evening, that a piece of paper is not going to protect me. What I want to say, as a certified advocate for domestic violence awareness, and having been a victim of domestic violence from nineteen seventy-seven through nineteen eighty-four, this is who I am today. And I empathize with all the conversations that have been brought forward, because in domestic violence, it's the men, and it's also the women, and it's across the board. And this happens by people that you trust. Not in a bathroom, not anywhere like that. I would want public safety to continue to protect those of us. You have the jurisdictions of the district attorney. At that time of engagement, there were no laws. So what do you do? You get involved for all members of all communities, for their protections and their safety. And then you move on. So I would ask that you would table it all together and focus on the emphasis of city government, the infrastructure, the roads, public safety, and to be respectful of staff, because the two people that you hire is the city manager and legal counsel. Do not dismiss all of the staff that are here to help you, focusing on the structure of government, and be respectful of the jurisdictions that you do not govern, as your board of supervisors, as the hospitals, as the school districts, and other smaller districts. Gentlemen, I said to you one time, congratulations, you have been sworn in and you will be sworn out.
Looks like I'm the closer. About three minutes. You know, it's interesting, I think it was thirteen years ago, I sat up on that very dais and listened to some of the same old thing. It's interesting to hear some of the guys reheating the nachos, you know. It's, it's, oh my gosh, it's intolerance, it's, it's acceptance, it's, it's rights. And I always find it, I find it interesting now as I did then, that the people scream the loudest about tolerance, or the most intolerant people of everybody else. And the people that demand acceptance are the least accepting of everybody else. And then everybody that, or people that say, well, we have my, I have my rights. And there's a great line that says, "Your rights to swing your arms into my nose." So, so I find it interesting that we're up here now, trying to make a big deal out of something, you know. Bathroom, like the lady said earlier, I just go to the bathroom, I'd get my thing done. I'm not trying to make a political grandstand out of it, but apparently some people are. I don't know who, you know, I'm not female. I identify as a, as a human with an X and a Y chromosome. I don't know what that makes me. But the females I know, they're not comfortable with this. Now, they're not down here grandstanding. They stay at home, they pay their bills, they go to work, but they don't like the idea. And I don't blame them. You know what I mean? So I, I find it interesting that some of these people came up here, talk about, and I love it, we have, apparently we have legal scholars now, and we have accountants who now tell us, you know, and, and I remember again, twelve years ago, these same people were the ones that came up here and prevented us from getting to Super Walmart because they filed a suit against us for whatever myriad reason. So, so I just think the hypocrisy here is overwhelming. Yep, and classy. So, you know what, guys? Giddy up. Thank you for taking the hits. I've been there. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Please, please refrain your comments. Please refrain your comments. We're letting you speak.
Josh Houlié, Fifth District. Tired yet, guys? It's been a long night already. I mean, it's, it's eight fifteen already. You haven't been able to do anything yet. What I've noticed interspersed throughout all of this, all these people trying to tell you that you're screwing with their rights, are people who are just trying to get business done. And all I can think of is, life would be a whole lot easier if you didn't do something so stupid, and they'd be able to get their work done. This is bigotry, pure and simple. You've got no purpose for this. You don't have any authority for this. The state of California has already said, you do this, this is going to come down on top of you. You, do some education, for God's sake. Your interview was abysmal and absolutely insulting to the city. Not a single thing that came out of your mouth on that interview was correct in any way, shape, or form. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves, truthfully. You have the ability to actually get things done, and instead, you waste people's time having to come out here and show you that their rights exist, that they exist as individuals, and that you don't have the authority to take that away from them. Do yourself a favor. Before you attempt to pass anything, before you put pen to paper or your mouth to a mic, stop and put this mantra in your head. "I am ignorant, I do not know what I am talking about, terrified of change." And then ask your questions, and people will hold your hand and talk slowly to you so that you can learn something. Because clearly, you have not learned anything yet. But I promise, it's gonna come.
Thank you, Josh.
Hello, my name is Paul Flores, and I live here in Porterville. You know, I consider all this just yoke cut land. My whole life, I've been raised atheist, so all this "in God we trust" stuff doesn't mean anything to me. And, you know, I've been bullied here the whole time I've lived here for various things, having long hair, coming, moving here eighth grade year. And in the time I've lived here, I've known at least ten people that are trans. And I've lived here often on, I've lived in cities, and all these people, the last thing I'd want to imagine them is to have any issue with anyone using a restroom, whether it's a police officer, whether it's some citizen thinking that they can police a restroom, or misgender someone. So when I think about all this, it just makes no sense to me at all. And I think if you guys are going to vote on this, before you vote, all of you guys should be handcuffed to a trans person. You guys should be forced to go to the restroom with all these trans people before you vote on it and after you vote on it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor Meister and City Council members. My name is Rosemary, and I reside here in Porterville. I've been here all my life.
Hold the mic down.
Thank you. My name is Rosemary, and I live here in Porterville. I was raised and born here in Porterville. I know there's a lot of things going on right now, and it's really hard to come up here and speak because I know there's a lot of people that are transgender, they're gay. I have friends that are gay. I have friends that are transgender also. And I'm not here to put them down. I'm here just to let people know that as a woman, I would want them to respect me in a bathroom, or a place of work, or any private place where a woman is, as I would respect them too. I feel that I need that respect too. But nobody talked about children here today. And as a mother and a grandmother, I would want to make sure that my child is safe, my grandchildren are safe when they're in the public bathrooms, or any place, whether it's uptown, at a mall, anywhere. Not all transgender people are bad, they're good people. They're just different than what I am. And I can accept that, if they can accept me as a woman. But I feel that there is a lot of hatred going on right now in this room, and it shouldn't be that way, because we all have our rights, everyone. And here I am today, just letting people know that we need to work things out without having to be protesting outside. I'm not going to go out there and protest for my rights right now, but I just want to have it equal for everybody. And I'm, I'm here to also say that this is solely about, I think, about privacy and respect for women and for children, for transgender also, because there are men that want to be women or are transgendering into women, and they often have to have also their safety too, taken care of. too, taken care of. So, like I said, I'm here, and I wanna thank you all for letting me come up here and voice my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. I'm gonna, this will be the last public comment, and then we have some people online, and then we're gonna close public comments. And maybe we could do, is there a way we could just do like a vote out loud so everybody gets a chance to? Because we, we do have city business to get to. I think I've been very fair in letting everybody speak their mind, and so, go ahead, sir.
No, thank you. Josh Flowers' address on record. I'm sitting back and I'm just listening to what's going on today, and I gotta say, I completely agree. I love freedom, and I think, you know, we, we gotta strive to have as much freedom as we can. However, we gotta also ask ourselves the question, do I have the freedom to drive wherever I wanna drive? The answer's no. Why? For the safety of others. I could actually get in, so this is why we have rules, and we have, with rules, we have order. Now, this is a very tricky situation because our founders knew that unchecked freedom does not work. It only works with liberty, and we've heard that several times today. That's a balanced approach. And here's what the definition, in my opinion, what liberty is. I can do whatever I want, as long as it doesn't infringe on your rights or other people's rights. This brings us to the conflict of today, which you guys have brought forward, which is California passed a law that conflicts with federal Title IX. Now, the question is, how do we recognize California rights and also not dismiss women rights, or our, our, our children, our, our daughters, who are the most vulnerable among us? I wanna thank you guys for your leadership, because you're being proactive to the problem, not reactive. See, the interesting idea here that you guys brought forward was this ordinance, which allows you to be more restrictive than what the California law has set forth. So therefore, I read an article this week in the paper, and I thought it made a lot of sense, is that we need to have safe places for all. So California law already has restrooms for everybody. So all you're looking at is you've got the locker rooms and you've got the sports. So we, if by, by putting this forward, this kinda makes sense that you guys can put something together for locker rooms and then something for sports, or, because there already is executive orders out there saying no funding coming to sports if they allow it.
Please, please be respectful.
Safe places for everybody. Now, again, I wanna support you guys and your League of Charger Cities. I think this is a very important part here, because we are supposed to be as self-governed as possible. That means at the lowest level, we have the most influence there is. And when I say that, it means we're not to be dictated by Sacramento until they tell us how we have to live our lives. I think you guys are taking a very good proactive approach to this. You're doing it in a way that doesn't get you sued. I think this is a great idea, and you're still trying to protect women at the same time, which is the most vulnerable among us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. We, okay, thank you, thank you. We have five members online, we'll listen to them, and then I think we're gonna go into recess, and then we'll come back and finish the city's business.
Your Honor, it only looks like that we do have one wishing to speak, so I can go ahead and move on.
Okay, bring him in.
Go. Ms. Tate, go ahead.
Having some technical difficulties?
We can hear you.
Okay, I've, I've done some statistics, and I know for a fact, as being the victim of ongoing sexual harassment, even rape, that it didn't happen in a bathroom. I asked a professional, he knows nothing about any of this city stuff that's going on, but I asked him a hypothetical, how do you feel about a female coming into a men's restroom? Because in every way, that's a female. However, if he has a penis, and they might look him sideways, he'd beat the shit out of him. That's just encouraging more violence. And you shouldn't be concerned about this, because we have gender, gender neutral bathrooms in most. I'm so upset with you, I don't know what to say. But the bottom line is that you're violating their rights, that you are opening yourself up to a lawsuit. And what you should really be focused on, anybody ever go to, what's his name? Anyway, we have sexual predators in our own communities. And so, you can go to Megan's List, and you can see little red dots all over your community. All you have to do is put your address in, and then you'll see where the sexual predators are. You know, they do all kinds of grooming and, and romancing young children to be able to get them in a position where they do all kinds of damage to them. And so, that's what you should be concerned with, is the pedophiles, the perverts. I worked with many of them, a whole unit of pedophiles, and they were all men. I haven't seen any, any kind of problem with any of, this has been going on well. And like I said, this is going to really impact the entire community. Most of our businesses are conforming to state laws, where they had, uh, neutral, neutral gender bathrooms. And I, I just think this is really stupid. You're just trying to get attention, it's all political, and it violates civil rights. And you probably will be, another, another lawsuit against the city, but it puts a bad look on this community. I don't know if you've actually petitioned any of your-
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Please summarize.
Okay, I just wanted to ask one question. Did you guys do any research on this at all? Do you have any numbers to back you up as far as making these decisions? I don't think you have.
Thank you, Ms. Tate.
I think you should reconsider. Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on. I think that we could go ahead and, and get the consent calendar done, and then we'll, we'll take a recess and go, come back for the public hearing. Yeah, that was it?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the last one. There's just one on. So, we'll, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separation discussion, separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of schedule matters. Are there any items that council wished to pull for discussion?
I wanted to pull item sixteen.
I'm pulling item sixteen. Are there any other?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number two, and number seventeen, and number eighteen. Thinking about pulling the air, airport leases, but I'm not sure about that.
Okay, so number two, please do that again.
Two, seventeen, and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen. And what did you want, Councilman Beltran?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay, so we are looking for a motion for consent calendar item one, and then three, through fifteen, and then nineteen. That will be my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote. Staff got that? Pass is five zero. Okay, we're gonna take a quick recess, fifteen minutes, and then we'll come back for the public hearing.
Let's get this meeting back going so we could get home tonight.
City manager, we have a public hearing. If you'd like to take the reins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have one public hearing, and I have Assistant Chief Barto to provide a staff report.
Did Chief run out on you?
He did, sir. He did. He did, indeed.
There he is. All right, all right.
He wouldn't miss this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council staff. This evening, we have a public hearing for you with Police Use of Military Equipment Annual Review, AB 481. On September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Newsom signed a series of police reform bills, including Assembly Bill four eighty-one, which states that the public has a right to know and participate in the decision-making processes related to the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment by state or local government officials in an effort to increase transparency, accountability, and oversight. AB 481 called for local agencies to give strong consideration to the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, civil liberties, and public input. At its meeting on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as part of a public hearing, the city council approved the items deemed to be military pursuant to AB 481. It should be noted that none of the items in the inventory of the Porterville Police Department are from the United States military. Please see the attached Agenda Staff Report from the City Council Meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Attachment three. The legislation required that local law enforcement agencies that seek to continue the use of military equipment acquired prior to January first, two thousand and twenty-two, accomplish the following, which have been completed. One, draft a military equipment funding, acquisition, and use policy that describes each piece of military equipment and the authorized uses for each piece of equipment, Attachment one. Seek approval of the policy from the governing body by ordinance for the continued use of existing military equipment before acquiring new military equipment or seeking funds for equipment purposes, and three, make publicly available any proposed or final military equipment use policy for as long as the military equipment is available for use on the agency's website. In addition to the above requirements, AB 481 also requires at least annually that the law enforcement agency shall, one, prepare an annual military equipment report with at least one, quote, "well-publicized and conveniently located community engagement meeting" tonight to allow for public discussion of the report and present the policy for review, renewal, and approval at a regular meeting of the governing body. During this review, the governing body shall consider the annual report and determine whether each type of military equipment has complied with the specified standards for approval. The Porterville Police Department's two thousand and twenty-four AB 481 Military Equipment Annual Report, Attachment two, is being presented to meet the annual requirement. AB forty-one defines, quote, "military equipment" as follows and differentiates the equipment by category. Category one, unmanned remotely piloted powered aerial or ground vehicles. Category two, mine-resistant ambush-protected MRAP vehicles or armored personnel carriers. However, police versions of standard consumer vehicles are specifically excluded from this subdivision. Category three, high-mobility multipurpose wheeled vehicles, HMMWV, commonly referred to as Humvees, two-and-one-half-ton trucks, five-ton trucks, or wheeled vehicles that have a breaching or entry apparatus attached. However, unarmored all-terrain vehicles, ATVs, and motorized dirt bikes are specifically excluded from this subdivision. Category four, tracked armored vehicles that provide ballistic protection to their occupants and utilize a tracked system instead of wheels for forward motion. Category five, command and control vehicles that are either built or modified to facilitate the operational control and direction of public safety units. Category six, weaponized aircraft, vessels, or vehicles of any kind. Category seven, battering rams, slugs, and breaching apparatuses that are explosive in nature. However, items designed to remove a lock such as bolt cutters or a handheld ram designed to be operated by one person are specifically excluded from this subdivision. Category eight, firearms of fifty caliber or greater. However, standard-issue shotguns are specifically excluded from this subdivision. Category nine, ammunition of fifty caliber or greater. However, standard-issue shotgun ammunition is specifically excluded from this subdivision. Category ten, specialized firearms and ammunition of less than fifty caliber, including assault weapons as defined in Sections three oh five one zero and three oh five one five of the Penal Code, with the exception of standard-issue service weapons and ammunition of less than fifty caliber that are issued to officers, agents, or employees of a law enforcement agency or a state agency. Category eleven, any firearm or firearm accessory that is designed to launch explosive projectiles. Category twelve, quote, "flashbang grenades and explosive breaching tools, tear gas," and, quote, "pepper walls," excluding standard-issue, service-issued handheld pepper spray. Category thirteen, TASER shockwave, microwave weapons, water cannons, and the long-range acoustic device, LRAD. Category fourteen, the following projectile launch platforms and their associated munitions, forty-millimeter projectile launchers, beanbag, rubber bullet, and specialty impact munition SIM weapons. Category fifteen, any other equipment as determined by a governing body or a state agency to acquire additional oversight. AB forty-eighty-one does not prohibit law enforcement from obtaining and using the above equipment. Rather, it creates a public process for obtaining approval of these types of equipment and their authorized uses. The Porterville Police Department possesses equipment in eight of the fifteen categories. See Attachment two for full descriptions. Current PPD equipment meeting military equipment designation. The department continues to carefully assess what equipment is needed to protect the public and officers when resolving critical incidents, such as active shooter response, apprehending violent offenders, hostage rescue, and barricaded subjects, among others. Certain equipment is also beneficial in providing information and creating cover, distance, and time that help to improve the decision-making process during critical incidents. This allows responding officers to take and evaluate the totality of the circumstances, which results in increased safety and reduced risk for everyone involved. In general, the most of the equipment listed in the report is highly specific in its use and is not carried date today. Items below may be used a few times a year, and their deployment requires departmental notifications. More information about the frequency of use for various types of equipment is provided in Attachment two. Many of the items designated by four eighty-one as military equipment have been in PPD's equipment inventory for years. The department's operating procedures and training program instructs staff in the proper use of this equipment. Current policies and procedures for equipment purchase and use. PPD adheres to the city's budget process and its purchasing policies and procedures when procuring its equipment. The use of equipment is governed by PPD Policy Number three hundred, Use of Force and De-escalation Policy, Policy Number three oh three, Control Devices and Techniques, and PPD Policy seven oh four, Military Equipment. In addition, the State of California Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training post establishes operational guidelines and training recommendations for certain equipment and tactics, and compliance with these guidelines is managed by the department's designated subject matter experts. All PPD policies and procedures that govern safe handling, storage, and qualifications related to specific equipment remain in effect. This includes, but is not limited to, California Occupational Safety and Health Agency, OSHA, certification of energetic breaching operators, Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco Firearms and Explosives, ATF, oversight of energetic breaching materials, and ATF oversight of noise flash diversionary devices. Fiscal impact, the acquisition of new or replacement equipment or items meeting the reporting requirements of AB four eighty-one is funded from the department budget in accordance with the AB four eighty-one Policy, Attachment one, and the approval of the city council. The AB four eighty-one Military Equipment Annual Report, Attachment two, has no direct fiscal impact. AB four eighty-one requires the law enforcement agency to prepare an annual military equipment report to include each use of military equipment by any complaints received and any internal audits or other information about policy violations. Further, AB four eighty-one requires the report to be posted for public discussion and presented to the city council for review, renewal, and approved annually. The recommendation is that city council fulfill the requirements of Assembly Bill four eighty-one. One, allow public comment and questions concerning the annual report and the funding, acquisition, and use of the equipment. Two, review and renew PPD Policy seven oh four, Military Equipment, Attachment one. Three, review the AB four eighty-one Military Equipment Annual Report, two thousand and twenty-four, Attachment two. And four, by opting not to modify or rescind Affirm Ordinance Number eighteen ninety-two. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report, Assistant Chief Barto. We'll open it to the public at eight fifty-one. If there's anyone that would like to speak, please come forward.
Gentlemen, I've spoken to this matter in past years. It's been a while, but it sounds like the police chief is describing to you that he's building a military out opportunistically. You're, I know all of you are very interested in constitutional matters and matters of liberty. Some of you have told me this. This, the city, he didn't describe police work that he's done. He hasn't described police work in the past that might have turned out better in the city if he had this equipment. He just says, "We want to get it." He didn't say how we've used it or how we might use it. Our founders specifically put it in the Bill of Rights that we don't have to, as people, quarter a military. You know this. Yet, but they also said we can have police in the Tenth Amendment, right? And so here's our police, and they're turning themselves into a military by designing their police processes to match military equipment that they just happen to be able to get if you give them permission. I ask you, ask them questions about which of the people in the past, the gentleman that was on a bicycle that Porterville Police chased to his house, and he didn't have any probable cause for that, and they killed him in his house in front of his family. Is that the sort of thing that this long list of equipment might have prevented in the past couple of years since they've been acquiring this? He said the bill requires them to tell you this, so have them tell you this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? This is the time. Is there anyone online, Fernando?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at eight fifty-three and bring it back to the council. You know, I'll just start with it. We live in the most heavily armed nation in the world, and our police department needs all the tools they can have to make sure they are safe and effective in serving this community. And they have my support, and I appreciate that. But I'll turn it to the council. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments or questions?
I have the same sentiments as the mayor, and, you know, we do live in a society where officers are sometimes outmatched by their weaponry and their techniques because there's a lot of people out there that want to harm officers. So in response to this, I support the police, and I know they have policies and procedures to where they'll only utilize these equipments as needed and as they need to. So, you know, I have the utmost confidence in the chief and the law enforcement in this community. They've, we don't know why they do the things when they're chasing a predator or a suspect, but I'm sure that they have the reasons why, based on warrants, felony warrants, and so on and so forth, because we don't know. We don't know nothing about what they've heard or the people that they're chasing. We can assume that we think we know, but we don't know. Unless you put on a badge and work thirty-five years or twenty years that they have, and then you can say something about it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor and
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rivas, Councilman Green, any comments or questions?
No, no comments. I think you've said it all so far.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Green, Vice Mayor McCurvy, any comments or questions?
No, I just say I fully echo those comments about the tough job that our law enforcement have to do. We got to make sure that they have all the tools and the resources. They've shown great restraint and great grace in the way that they operate in the city, and I'm all for this. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Beltran?
I've supported it the last two years. I've been up here on council. So with that, I'd make the motion to go with staff recommendations. Do we need to include Recommendation one for allow public comment and questions? We kind of just did that. Yeah, so, okay, yeah.
So I'll second his motion. If there's no other discussion, call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to scheduled matters. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have ten scheduled matters for your consideration. The first scheduled matter is the updated concept for the transit brand refresh, and I've asked Mr. Tree to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Radenauer. Mayor, council members. At its meeting on February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the city council provided direction to update the transit branding concepts to incorporate a bold Americana theme, prominently featuring the city's motto, "In God Do We Trust." This initiative follows the council's initial consideration on January twenty-first regarding a refresh of transit vehicle branding to modernize the fleet appearance while aligning with the city's heritage and values. Branding updates present an opportunity to enhance public perception of transit services, improve consistency across the fleet, and strengthen civic identity through a design that reflects the community's character. In response to the council's direction, staff work with Transit Media, Inc. Jenna Salazar is attending virtually. She's born and raised Portavillean, a successful woman-owned business, has a successful woman-owned business, and a veteran. She is here to answer any questions and helped us design three concepts for your consideration, which provide the following elements: a bold Americana theme featuring patriotic red, white, and blue color schemes, and Fern, I don't know if you can pull that up while I'm talking, but it might be helpful for the discussion. A modernized representation of the American flag integrated across all transit vehicle types. A prominent display of the city's motto, "In God Do We Trust," positioned for high visibility. These updated concepts provided as attachments to this report align with the city's commitment to reinforcing civic pride while maintaining a contemporary and professional appearance for the transit fleet. At the council's direction, the updated quote focuses on eleven vehicles, reducing the total estimated cost from the total estimated cost from two hundred and eighty thousand to ninety thousand. Funding for this project will be sourced through the Transit Division's operating budget, which is financially supported by the FTA, covering up to fifty percent of the cost, and the remaining local match is covering, covered by local transportation funds. The implementation timeline for the updated transit branding is estimated at thirty-eight days, targeting a completion by the end of April. It is staff's recommendation of the City Council. One, select one of the conceptual designs, and, two, adjust specific design elements and direct staff to incorporate requested modifications prior to finalization, and, three, direct staff to proceed with implementation and obtain quotes from available firms qualified to perform the project through a competitive procurement process. That's the conclusion of staff's report. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tree. Uh, bringing it back to, uh, council, um, you know, this is, this is what we wanted. I'm, I'm really excited about it. Start with Councilman Green. What, do you have any comments? Do you have a preference?
Uh, I was kind of quick. I didn't get a chance to look at it, really let it soak in, but no, I don't right at the moment, Mr., Mr. Mayor. You, how about you?
Well, I personally, okay, I'll, I'll go. I like, uh, Concept One and Concept Three. Um, I, I like the All America sign on the back. I wouldn't mind seeing that on whatever bus we go with, um, but I'll, I'll open it up. Uh, Councilman Rivas, do you have any input on some of the designs?
Well, yes, I like, um, all the concepts, but if one's going to stand out, two of them, I would take, uh, one and, one and three. I like those concepts.
Okay.
I think they're, they're excellent, and, uh, so I turn that over to you.
Okay, Councilman Beltran? Any input?
My only input is on number one. I would, uh, go with probably about a thirty percent reduction in the City of Porterville emblem there, just a little smaller on that one. That would be my input as far as, uh, the ones I liked were, I'd probably go with one, um, and just with about a thirty percent reduction of the city, um, symbol there.
And I, I'm sitting here, I like the big symbol, so it's funny. I was.
It almost looks out of place, though. It's just, it's, and little, I'd say about the size of the, the inner white circle might be, it just seems out of place, that's all.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I, I was, I was kind of leaning towards this one, but with the All America sign that's on Design Three, that, and if you made "In God We Trust" a little smaller on the back with that All America sign, I thought maybe, uh, interesting. Uh, Vice Mayor McCurvy, any input?
Well, it's definitely number one. I really like number one, and I like it big. Uh, I think it's really prominent and shows the pride of our city and our emblem. I think, uh, what I would suggest is the All America emblem that's on Concept Three be inserted like in the corner of the flag here, towards the front of the, where the blue changes over to the flag, towards the front of the bus, just like a badge.
What about on, what about on the back of the bus, similar to what this design is here on this one?
Oh, I like it on the back, too. Yeah, so it could go on the back. I think that would be good. I like that All America City on there. Uh, and then I'd like to maybe see it on the bus, uh, stop also. So I like that emblem, that All America badge, that emblem, it really pops, and I'd like to see that on, uh, these others, uh, as the mayor suggested on the back would be great. Might be, uh, great to have it on the bus stop, too. I really like that concept, number one, with the additional badge on there for All America City.
Is this, are we just giving direction, or is this something we need to vote on, Mr. Tree?
We do need direction. Um, one, a concept, uh, this discussion about final tweaks is, is great, and then direct staff to issue a competitive procurement to move forward.
So I, can I make a motion then? Uh, how about if we say, um, I would make a motion that we take Design Concept Number One, but we would use Design Concept Num, for the bus.
Number Three.
And Design Concept Number Three for the All America City applied to Number One, and that I'd also like the bus stop from Concept Number Three with, uh, Concept Number One. So it's a little bit of an intermingling there, if that motion makes sense.
Okay, so just for clarification, you want Concept Three, Bus Stop.
Right.
With the All America logo within that, and then taking Concept Number Three, the back of, uh, this, this bus, "In God We Trust" smaller with the All America sign to be on Design Concept Number One?
Yes, I think that's exactly what I said. Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I, I would second that. I'm, I'm with that. That's where I'm leaning.
Just for clarification, that includes the rest of the recommendations to proceed with the, um, implementation, obtain quotes, et cetera.
With, with staff recommendations, you're talking on, on the nine, nine and two, nine transit buses and two microtransit?
Correct.
I think that was it. Um, yes, with staff recommendation on, on the discretion to pick the buses that are best suited for this project.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Is there any other conversation?
I'm good with it.
Okay, call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number Twenty-Two. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, item number twenty-two is council's consideration and evaluation of charitable car washes, and I've asked Mr. Knight to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, Mayor, and members of council. At its meeting on February fourth, the council requested that staff bring forth a City Council agenda item outlining the process and regulation of charitable car washes for review and consideration. On June twenty-first, two thousand five, the City Council adopted Ordinance Sixteen Sixty-nine, amending Chapter Fifteen of the City Municipal Code to include Article Six, Section Fifteen Dash Seventy through Fifteen Dash One Seventy, establishing the charter, the charitable car wash, uh, permit procedure in the municipal code. The ordinance outlines, outlines the permit process and operational standards for charitable car washes. Ordinance Sixteen Sixty-nine, Section Fifteen Dash Ninety states that the non, that a non-refundable application fee in an amount to be set by resolution shall be paid by the applicant. The application fee shall, shall be based solely upon the administrative cost in processing the application and ensuing the permit. Uh, on August sixteenth, two thousand five, City Council adopted Resolution, uh, One Twenty-seven Dash Two Thousand Five, setting the charitable car wash permit application fee at twenty-five dollars. In addition, water conservation has been a longstanding priority for the city. As outlined in the Water Conservation Plan, Ordinance Sixteen Sixty-nine requires all car wash operations, including charitable events, to follow regulations regarding water usage, runoff, control, and conservation practices to limit environmental impacts due to wastewater runoff. The number of permit, permitted car washes outlined in the ordinance is limited to four per calendar year, and listed for the last ten years is applications for permits, uh, that have been issued. The number of permits issued significantly declined in two thousand seventeen, with two years reporting no applications in the last ten years. Eighteen permits were received. The city's water conservation plan requires all charitable car washes to adhere to water usage guidelines noted below. Odd and even watering schedule, car washes must follow designated watering days to reduce peak demands on the city's water system. Watering is prohibited between the hours of five AM, ten AM, five PM, and ten PM. Runoff control, excessive runoff is prohibited. Water must be contained within the permitted location. Storm drains must be protected from detergent contamination. Use of a shut-off nozzle, all hoses must be equipped with an automatic shut-off nozzle to prevent water waste. Recycling water where feasible is available for car washes should use recycled water. That pertains probably mostly to commercial, not a charitable car wash, uh, just to be noted, but is noted within the regulation. Use of commercial facilities is encouraged. Organizations are strongly encouraged to partner with commercial car wash businesses that use water, water efficiency systems. Uh, staff is seeking council's direction in regard to the permitting process and requirements for charitable car washes. Staff's recommendation is that City Council provide direction regarding the permitting process and requirements for charitable car washes as outlined in Ordinance Number Sixteen Sixty-nine and Resolution One Twenty-seven Dash Two Zero Zero Five. Staff's available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Knight, uh, for the report. Uh, we'll bring it back to council. Uh, Vice Mayor McCurvy, you, you brought this as a scheduled matter. Uh, I'll go ahead and let you lead the charge.
Yeah, thank you very much, Director Knight. Uh, appreciate that. I did read that, um, regulation and, uh, thought about this over the past couple of weeks, and, you know, we are now discouraging car washes because of this process. It's apparent through the amount of applications that we received, and we've also done a terrific job of conservation. So I think the voluntary conservation is excellent in our city, and I think the charitable car washes have suffered because of the regulation process. Um, I think that, uh, given all that, I think if we suspend the regulation entirely, it goes along with the, uh, what I ran on, and that is reducing regulations. It will save time in our office. Uh, we don't, we need to make money off of, uh, profitable, uh, nonprofits that are, that are trying to earn money for our kids. It, the process is clearly not being abused, so I would move that, uh, my colleagues can weigh in on this, but I would move that we suspend the regulation entirely until further notice.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilman Beltran?
That's an interesting proposal. Um, is there a reason why we have this as a, um, process?
Well, it was instituted prior to my time at the city, but my understanding is that there was, uh, occurrences where individuals were using charitable car washes as more of a permanent source of income, um, with repetitive events occurring, and that was the direction at the time of council's evaluation, was to implement an ordinance and regulations that would require a permit for that.
So these ordinances have been on in, uh, since two thousand and five. So it isn't necessarily because of this ordinance that that's dropped. It's probably because there's other means of fundraising mechanisms. That's probably the main reason. I work with a lot of nonprofits, and car washes is something that's just gone away. It's so inexpensive now to go through drive-throughs and what have you. I think the numbers show that this is just almost an ineffective way of fundraising nowadays, is, would be my opinion. Um, I, I think that just completely getting rid of it would probably go back to those, some of those, uh, concerns where people are, um, misusing churches, um, misusing the, the spirit of what this was intended to help those organizations. I think that's probably where this ordinance come from, just from the history of other ordinances. Um, I wouldn't be in favor of getting rid of the process because there are limited amounts. I could see with maybe getting rid of the application fee or cutting that down to a certain, you know, a nominal fee because they aren't significant of staff's time. That would be my concern, is if we completely got rid of this, and all of a sudden, let's say for whatever reason, I don't anticipate it, but there's thirty car washes now, all of a sudden that will, will take staff's time. Um, but as is, I, I think there's just so few, and I haven't heard of, like I said, I work with dozens of nonprofits, and none of those seem to be a concern, or even the churches that, from, from my, um, experience, this doesn't seem to be an issue. So I'm not for just completely getting an ordinance. If anything, it's, uh, either limiting the fee, but not, not completely getting rid of it. So that's my opinion.
That's an interesting opinion, because you, at one end, you say it's not an issue, and it's, it's not anything, but then you're saying not to cut the regulation. If it's not an issue, then does there need to be a regulation? Uh, just for clarification, uh, Councilman.
Well, it's here for a reason, right?
Yeah.
We weren't here when that happened. So, um, does it seem like because there's, there was three uses last year that we just need to completely get rid of it? I don't know.
Yeah.
That's part of the conversation, I guess. I, I guess it's not, it's, it's almost on the opposite end. This isn't a problem, so why make it a problem?
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I, if I could comment on that, I'm, I, the, the second part of that is that we're spending the time and the resources to manage this because, and it's, and it's not worth our time, and I think that we need to trust the, the community to operate their hoses and their car washes because they already do a good job. So I think it's, uh, it's about reducing regulations, it's about reducing the staff time to manage it and operate it, and it's also about, you know, restoring, restoring the spirit of the community for the nonprofits, and I, I don't think it needs to be a regulation. So I, I will stay with, uh, suspending the entire regulation.
Councilman Green, you have any comments?
Yeah, if I recall right, I think Jason, uh, Mr. City Manager, you said that over the last number of years, nobody's ever been cited for.
Correct, so staff does not go out and look to.
So it's really not, it hasn't ever really been an issue.
We, we work to educate on, on that matter, but to, to not cite churches or charities having a car wash.
So I, I think, yeah, I have to agree with you there, Ed.
Okay, Councilman Green, thank you. Uh, Councilman Rivas?
No comment at this time.
Okay, I'm, I, uh, I campaigned on reducing regulation as well, and, um, I'd agree with, with, uh, the comments, and this is a non-issue. Why even make it something that staff has to work on? To reduce the fees, it's already at twenty-five dollars. It's cost more money for our staff to, to even deal with this.
Law enforcement would have to come out if people aren't complying, so.
Yeah, we, we still have watering days, and those schedules are, are still in play. If there's a, a excessive runoff of water, that's still within our, our ordinance for, uh, if they're abusing it, and then they would be cited.
So just to communicate with council, that's also going to be my request for direction. Are, are we saying to remove all, uh, regulation on car washes, or only remove the permit and the fee on regulating car washes?
I would say the permit and the fee. We still don't want people running water hoses without a, a water spick and just going down the sidewalk, and we're still about water conservation. That is a, a goal, uh, here in the City of Porterville, but to put trust in the people and allow them to wash their cars for a fundraiser, uh, without having to go through a government agency to, to do so, I think is, is the right thing.
I appreciate that clarification.
So the, the process, um, to, to change the ordinance, should the council want to change the ordinance, would be to take action, um, and direct staff to bring in ordinance back. Would have to have a public hearing for that ordinance to be noticed and heard, and at that time, the council can then adopt an ordinance which would amend a currently adopted ordinance.
Okay, so we have.
I have a question on that, just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible by resolution to just remove, remove the fee on that?
Correct, so the fee for the car wash, charitable car wash ordinance is set by resolution, but the permitting process is set by ordinance. So it would be, um, if the council so chooses to direct staff to change, to bring back a public hearing to consider an ordinance which would amend the charitable car wash ordinance, and at that time, we could also rescind the fee as it would not be applicable if there is, if there's council action to have, uh, no permitting process.
Uh, point of clarification, uh, uh, Mr. Ridenhour, um, we can't suspend it? That's not removing it, it's just turning it off.
So you can simply opt not to enforce it and just leave it on the books. It's, you know, eventually, if you're really not intending on utilizing it, then it's good practice to go ahead and eliminate it, but, yeah, you can suspend enforcement of it.
We can suspend enforcement as an option, or we can bring it back in a hearing and kill it entirely, and.
Or wash it.
Yeah. Well, I don't think we should have it on the books if we're not going to enforce it, but I think the idea of suspending it, uh, leads to what the concern that, uh, Councilman Beltran had.
Right. Suspending it would give you an opportunity to see.
Right.
How it all works. Yep.
Okay.
I'm with your view of suspending if you got.
Yeah. So what, so would we do like a two-year suspension and see what happens? Uh, if it gets abused, we, we go from there?
That'd be council's directive. If that's what I have to do, um, that could be an action.
Yeah, I, I'd be okay with it. That, that sounds okay to me.
Okay, so make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we suspend the enforcement of that for two years and, uh, monitor that process and bring it back and kill it if it, uh, doesn't get used.
I'll second that motion with the clarification that we're still making sure water isn't running down, down the streets. There's, there's the proper procedure is, as far as, and, and I know that's all based off of complaints, but, uh, we don't want the watering to be abused where we're just running water down into the gutter, so spicking on a hose, those kinds of things, but with suspending this, will that, that's it, right?
Do we need to vote?
Correct.
Okay.
So with the, with the vote to suspend it, the ordinance will still be on the books, but there will, um, if anybody comes to request a, um, a car wash. A car wash application, they will then be informed that, um...
A car wash application, they will then be informed that they don't have to get an applic- that enforcement has been put on hold for two years.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And we're still following the water schedule? That would be something you would tell them?
Correct. So I'll work with our team at Finance and with Public Works. And we will then come up with a flyer that illustrates the, the restrictions and the rules to that, to, to follow the, the watering schedule. But there will not be a permitting process that will request the commu-, the community to take place in.
Okay, we have a first and a second with clarification. If there's any other comments?
If I can say, I would agree on, on suspending it and evaluating it after the two years. I would, I would go with that instead of completely terminating it. Let's see where it goes with that. I, I would, I would, I would go with that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Any other comments? Call for the vote? Pass is five zero. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number Twenty-three.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the consideration of the establishment of Porterville Municipal Airport Standing Committee. At its meeting on February the eighteenth, the City Council provided direction to staff to bring forth an item to establish a Porterville Municipal Airport Committee comprised of nine members, including two City Council members and seven public members. The public membership to be comprised of representatives, representatives from the Porterville Municipal Airport, including Porterville Experimental Aircraft Association and the Porterville Military Academy. The scope of the committee is to be advisory to the City Council on matters pertaining to the city, to the Porterville Municipal Airport. Pursuant to that direction, a draft resolution has been prepared for council's consideration. It is proposed that the committee be staffed to the discretion of the City Man-, City Manager. Staff's recommendation is that the City Council consider adoption of the draft resolution for the establishment of the Porterville Municipal Airport Standing Committee.
Thank you for the report, City Manager. Bringing it back to council, is there any comments? I, I'm, this is something we all were in agreeance, and if there are no comments, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
I second that.
Are there any comments? We'll call for the vote. Pass is five zero. Okay, moving on to Schedule Matter Number Twenty-four. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. At its meeting on February the eighteenth, the City Council approved Mayor Meister's request for an item to be added to tonight's agenda to consider the establishment of an ordinance to protect women's safe spaces. The proposed ordinance has been included as an attachment to the staff report in the packet. Should council desire to move forward with an establishment of a new ordinance, a public hearing will be scheduled for a future City Council meeting for consideration of adoption, followed by a second reading. Staff's recommendation, the council provide direction on proposed establishment of an ordinance to protect women's safe spaces. Staffs available for questions.
Okay, thank you for the report, City Manager. I'll bring it back to the council. This was my motion, and so I'll, I'll lead with this. You know, this, this ordinance has flaws. And we have standing issues from the city of Porterville. And so with that being said, who does have standing? And that is the people, the people that are harmed. And so as we build this ordinance, and it will take time, I, I'd like to add to some of the definitions. And one is from the HHS, the U.S. Department of Human and Health and Human Services, that defines a man as an adult male and a woman as an adult human female. These are based on biological sex, which is a person's immutable classification as either male or female. So some of these definitions is sex, a person's biological classification, male or female, based on reproductive autonomy and chromosomes. Male, a person who produces sperm. Female, a person who produces eggs. Man, an adult human male. Woman, an adult human female. Boy, a minor human male. And girl, a minor human female. Some of those into Section Two of the definitions. I, I also just want to talk about the standing issues. You know, like I said, it's not the city who has the standing. And so we really have to look and be creative with this ordinance. And, and it is the people who have the standing, the women that are injured from laws that are passed by the state that are unconstitutional and violate women's Eighth Amendment right, which is cruel and unusual punishment to force biological men into women's spaces. Like sports, and for example, you have women like Riley Gaines, an elite college swimmer who has had titles stripped from her, stolen from her by male athletes. Volleyball player in San Jose State that is, is dominating girls volleyball in college. And then you, like the Olympic boxers who won two gold medals stealing, stealing medals from, from women. And, and there's also bills in this state currently, like AB one thirty-two, that allows men into women's prisons. And currently, CDCR is about to have their firstborn child from these laws that push people that have gender dysphoria into women's spaces. And it's wrong. Currently in the city of Porterville and, and all cities throughout the state, AB three six one forces tampon dispensers in the boys' restrooms. If we are not drawing lines, then that means a biological girl can go into the male's restroom, and that reverses roles. A biological male can go into the female's restroom. They could go into the locker room, and they could go into the sports. It's, it's unfair, and in my opinion, it's unconstitutional. Now, there are state laws like AB nineteen fifty-five where gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, it is discrimination to, to go against them. And so ultimately, we have a conflict of these laws, and, and it's the people that have the standing, the women. And so with that, and enforcement and penalties, I think that we should look at, at maybe taking away the first offense, a written warning. Second offense, a fine up to five hundred dollars. And a third offense, a thousand, and going up to five thousand. And maybe take that section out because the city doesn't have standing to enforce those policies. But what we do have the ability to is to support a lawsuit for the people. So if there is someone that is harmed by these laws from the state, the city can support lawfare on the state. And that, that is the direction that I'd like to try to take this ordinance. I'll, I'll open it up to council. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. Been watching this issue closely for years, and it's, you, we can see the trend, right? So the winds have changed, the culture war has shifted. We see from the President and HHS, we see a shift, taking DEI out of our schools because it's nonsense. We're taking it out of many things. So there's, the shift is happening. And we were disappointed this week because our House of Representatives passed this very thing or a very similar thing this week, and then the Senate blocked it. And so this is going to be kicked around a little bit in our Congress, even at the federal level. But at the state level, what bothers me the most about what's going on in our state of California is our state continues to overreach and overstep. Our state has made these laws that actually create something that shouldn't be. This, this idea that you are a protected class is your civil right. You're, it's not immutable. It's not the same as being black. It's not the same as your biology. And the state has created a conflict here that we see every day with our families and, and through this state that needs to be resolved. And I, what I like about this approach is that there was a lot of nonsense today in our chambers with a lot of triggered activists. But what, what, what I understand about this is that the vast majority of the people, and we heard the stats, two percent of the people have gender dysphoria, and that means ninety-eight percent of the people don't. Yet the two percent are complaining that we won't adapt to what they want. And so this, this is a conflict that was created by the state, and I think we have an obligation to our community to draw a boundary about what is right and what is wrong. And there's this problem that I have, and it's a civil rights argument, and it's going to have to be hashed out in the courts. And there's, there's something before the courts today that was, I think it was last May from Idaho, that's going to go to the Supreme Court, and we'll see what that does. And so I don't know if this safe spaces thing that we're doing, which isn't anti-transgender despite all the, the rhetoric that we heard tonight, it's just about protecting women. And I think that what we want to do is, is draw a line that's very clear about what that means. And if it means that this ordinance that we put through is something that is predicated on a Supreme Court ruling, you know, I'm, I'm all for pausing until we can get to that point. Maybe we're a little early on this, but the wind has shifted, the culture war has shifted. The activists are not going to win this. It's, I heard tonight many things like, we hate God, and we'll invoke Satan here in, in this chamber, which is an abomination. Why would, why would people come into our chamber when in two thousand and eight, the city of this, this city of Porterville voted to put "In God We Trust" as our motto? Eighty-three percent of the people voted for that. That's the will of the people. You know, I, I heard for twenty years in this chamber that elections have consequences. They do. And now that's shifted the other direction. And we see that the will of the people is about making sure that we put "In God We Trust" higher than where it was, because that's the will of the people. And that the will of the people is that families and traditional families and faith are what this city is about, what our country is about, and what it's founded on. What this does is it draws boundaries to say, hey, this city will stand for the families that want to protect their girls. And with the state law the way it is, every one of our schools already has this accommodation. It's part of the law. So it's, it doesn't even seem like it's very critical. But I like the idea that we draw the boundary and say, our city will stand with the, with the people of the city. And I would suggest that maybe we set aside some money for litigation to protect those that are harmed by this in preparation for something, even though there may not be a harm now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Beltran.
Good discussion overall. I voted in favor of this, just to bring it to the table and bring it to the community to have this discussion. We heard many comments, mostly from one side, but that doesn't represent everybody. I think overall, how I feel, I have a lot of notes on this, but I'm not going to waste any time more on it. In general, I think this comes down to something similar to what earlier City Council dealt with, with the homeless encampment ordinance. We're early on in that, there was some standing with some of the regulations that we implemented. So I think similar to that is, is my feeling on this. I have a lot of thoughts personally on this matter. I know those, most of the comments were directed at adult situations. Those aren't the situations we're concerned with, I think. And I don't want to say we as, as this body up here, but just the individuals I speak with. It mostly has to do, and I'll give you a situation. I know a, a lot of comments where there hasn't been a situation in Porterville, nothing has been reported. We're all very aware that not all things are reported, even from heterosexual situations. Not everything is always made or reported, whether it's at school, at a work site. But one situation I want to bring in is like, we have a public pool. There's showers, there's changing rooms for that. These are for circumstances, I think, where I have a concern where there is a such thing as, make sure, pronounce it right here, autogynephilia. And that is where there is defined as a male's propensity to be sexually aroused by the thought of himself as a female. I would hate for my grandchildren, granddaughters, I have two of them, to be in that changing room when there's a male who might have this. You know, like I said, we're not going to check gender, we're not going to be, we're going on a trust issue, but unfortunately, just as there is in the heterosexual community, there are predators out there. And from my, my standing on something like this, overall, I hope we table this till we get some federal and state, especially if the Supreme Court takes up any of these cases. But it's for those type of extreme situations that may happen. But nonetheless, I'm a Second Amendment supporter. But the state of California heavily regulates my rights, even though it's a constitutional right. And I respect the law. I follow California's laws, even though I disagree. So I think similar to this, I'm not saying that they're equal, but there are people on both sides that are going to follow the rules, they're going to challenge rules. But there are those extreme situations. I work for the Porterville School District. There are these feminine hygiene products in sixth grade bathrooms. You know, this is a conversation that parents have to have with their children. This is not what we, most people would consider normal. The state of California heavily regulates, they took away parental rights. My child, the school is almost encouraging my child to keep lives from me. You know, that is not their place to step into the middle of my relationship with my children. And so I think some of this overstep, overbound or overstepping boundaries led to situations like this, where there's ninety-nine more things we need to be dealing with other than this. But at the same time, we can't ignore it. These are potential problems, and we're just trying to fix it. We could do this and fix roads. We could do this and work on transit at the same time. So we can multitask, no problem. There are concerns with litigation, and I, I think the mayor spoke to some of those things where, and the vice mayor is, I think this might be a skeleton or a rough draft of something that we will continue to work on because there is standing, the state of California recognizes three genders, male, female, and non-binary. And we can't put in rule that contradicts some of this stuff. So I think this is a rough draft, just like the homeless encampment ordinances. And I think from my opinion, we should table it, but continue working on this behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Councilman Green, you have any comments?
No, not at this time. I think enough's been said.
Okay. Councilman Rivas.
Man, a lot has been said today. And a lot of things have been casted towards us in regards to Satan be with us and all that. You know, I've been in, in situations in my career where I know these people personally back in the early eighties when it all started with them. And how the medical department got involved and began, I'm sorry, and began inducing drugs into their home, into their bodies so they can become more females. And how they would, they, they were very violent, and we had to separate them because they would entice the males in the male population. So, you know, in, in that, I believe in women's safety, and I believe in men's safety. And if there is a chance that we have to protect them, we'll protect them. But in regards to them saying they're, they're going to be victims, well, there's victims in, in every sort of life. In regards to my granddaughter, you know, I would hate to go into, her come out and say there's a male in there where just because the law says it's okay. I don't believe in that. I mean, yeah, there's two, there's litigation on civil rights and, and whatnot, but, and I think we should discuss this more often. But I have a few situations here where the propensity of violence on a transgender or male, female, or the so-and-so forth is within themselves. Because they, they, they argue amongst each other, and because of the jealousy, because when they're in the public, I've seen it, and I've witnessed it in my career, where, you know, a male make, takes notice on a transgender, and then they, they start fighting amongst themselves. So in regards to that male and female, that's, that's ridiculous. You know, and that, that they're not a victim, you know, they, they don't victimize themselves. But I, I'd like to say a few case laws here in regards to Virginia. Finds teen gender guilty of sexual assault in Loden County High School in the girls' bathrooms. There's case law. Doesn't have to happen in Tulare County. And in Oklahoma, transgender student charged with assaulting a female in high school classroom in the bathroom. A transgender in Wyoming, a woman convicted of sexually assaulting a ten-year-old girl in the bathroom. What if it was your girl? What are your, your granddaughter? How would you feel about that? So we do need boundaries, and we do need safety amongst everybody. And also, another transgender flashes her four freshman girls in the locker room after she swims in the Wisconsin swimming pool. I mean, so there is case law, endless of case law. You just have to choose which one you want to pick out. Another, bathrooms are often, and there's fourteen case laws here, often places of sexual assault of women and children by transgenders. So it does happen. So all this convoluted that it, you're, that. So all this convoluted, that, you, that, save it. Because it does happen. And we're not against transgender. We're just protecting everybody. Women, children, and for, and so, and, and that, I mean, I can go on and on. If, if you'd like, I can give this to you. So, you know, it does happen. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Meister.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Yes, and ultimately, when we brought, when I brought this ordinance, it, it does provide a safe space for people that suffer from gender dysphoria. We're, we're not up here being anti anyone, we're only trying to create safe spaces for all, while still supporting women's rights, the Title IX rights. And, and so with that, I know there's also a stay on President Trump's executive order to keep men out of women's spaces, but I don't think the stay is going to last too long. And I, I think it will be heard in the courts and it's going to be overturned. And so with that, the state is going to find themselves in a financial pinch. And, and just to read some of the executive order that sticks out to me. Educational institutes receiving federal funds cannot deny women an equal opportunity to participate in sports. As some federal courts have recognized, ignoring fundamental biological truths between the two sexes deprives women and girls meaningfully access to educational facilities, Tennessee versus Cardona. And therefore, it is the policy of the United States to rescind all funds from educational programs that deprive women and girls of fair athletic opportunities which result in engagement, humiliation, and silencing of women and girls and deprive them of privacy. Title IX, enforcement actions against educational institutions, including athletic associations composed of the governed by such institutions that deny female students an equal opportunity to participate in sports and athletic events by requiring them in women's categories to compete with or against, or to appear unclothed before males. This, it, it's gone too far with the civil rights movement, and it's now intruding onto women's spaces. And that's, that's the point of this council here. We believe everyone has rights, but when someone's rights start intruding into others, that's when it's gone too far. There was a gentleman that made a comment earlier tonight. You have the right to swing your fist, but as soon as it hits my nose, you have now violated my liberty interest. So, and I, I thought that was a great quote for what we have going on. With that, I would not like to table this discussion. What I'd like to do is build on it. Talking about some of the definitions that we have here in Section Two, that I brought earlier, really identifying what a man, what a woman is, and, and adding to women's facilities and men's facilities. I think that we should strike the enforcement side and go with more of what Councilman, I mean, excuse me, Vice Mayor McHurvey was talking about, of building a legal fund to support.
Yes, I had a question on that. So are you wanting to, instead of, instead of making this, because right now it reads as sort of like a basic code enforcement type.
Yeah.
Type ordinance. Are you wanting instead to create like, try to create like a civil right of action and then support that? Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, that, that sounds.
For those that are aggrieved by the current state law? Is that what I'm?
Yes, but, and you could even say unconstitutional state law.
Okay. So, okay. And then the other part was, did you want to, somebody had mentioned predicating it on Supreme, on a Supreme Court ruling? Did you want to include that as well? I mean, from my standpoint, I think that helps it, because I do think that this is right now, it's, you know, Ninth Circuit has been pretty clear on this.
Yes, no, that, yes. Whatever you could do to, to help this ordinance go forward.
Because, I mean, it would, it would make basically potentially be then, it wouldn't necessarily be effective until you had clear, like if there was a clarity in the U.S. Supreme Court, is what, what, what I understood. So, which I think would definitely help, it would.
Yeah, of course.
So, okay, and then I think, did I have one more thing? I'm trying to see if I have anything else. I think that was it. So, oh, and then, yeah, create a some sort of like litigation support fund or something to that degree.
Yeah, we're, we're about to have our priorities meeting coming up, and so maybe that's where we address a budgetary area, very similar to what Sacramento's doing with a fifty million dollar budget to fight the Trump administration. Maybe we have a budget of discretionary spending for the council to support constituents of Porterville that's rights have been violated. Is there any other comments? That's the direction. Do we, we're not making a motion, we're giving directions, and, and this is something that you will work on and then bring back to council?
Sure.
You know, as much as I love free speech, and I'm glad everybody came in here and said what they wanted to say, what I didn't appreciate is, was the hate and the threatening behavior and the epithets and the slander from the audience. That's uncivil. And so when the activists come in here and they act uncivilly about this, we need to continue to have this conversation until that tone comes down and we have a real conversation where we're talking with each other instead of at each other. And so thank you for this conversation. I think we need to continue this conversation.
City Attorney, do you, do you have what you need? Do you need us to vote on this?
Obviously, so, you know, if, we'll have more conversations about this, but I'll, I can see what I can come up with, based on what you guys, the direction tonight.
Okay, is there any other comments from the council?
No comment.
I would just make a brief comment is, I think like a lot of things, we, being a small entity, I don't believe in putting any tax funds towards any legal process on this matter. We already run, run a very, very tight ship with things that are needed. Diverting any funds for legal fees to fight something like this until something comes from federal and especially Supreme Court, I just hate to set aside hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars when it could be going to things. We're talking about cutting services or restricting certain things because we're trying to find funds. All we do, it seems like we're spending money. We already cut fees for utilities for youth sports. We're doing another traffic report we did in, in an area already. We are, you know, redoing buses. I mean, it feels like we're just spending money we don't have yet, and I, if you want to move forward with some of this stuff, I, I'm so against putting any funding that we could use. We're talking about later on, then another matter of giving raises, and it's just like, this is money we don't have to spend. And I just, if you want to move forward with some of this stuff, I just, it, it, it's concerning me.
It is, it is a good concern, Councilman Beltran, and thank you for that. Is there any other comments? It's not something that we have to go through with right away, Councilman Beltran, but it's something that we can explore, just like you made in the, the comments in the beginning, and, and then come to a decision once we explore and see what our options are. Like you said, we can multitask, we could still manage the city while looking at options on how to protect the rights of the people of Porterville.
I'd like to add one thing. I, I would not be in favor of taking money away from other services, but let, let's talk about this, let's get on the ground with it, because I know there's other things that are pressing for, for the city, because we are on a tight budget. But I think we can, we can get to the bottom of this and, and, and have more meetings on this and talk about it and move it forward. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it with you.
Thank you, Councilman Rivas. Are there any other comments? We have a direction, so we'll move on to Schedule Matter Number Twenty-Five.
Thank you, Your Honor. Schedule Matter Twenty-Five is a consideration of a letter of support and declaration for the establishment of a League of Charter Cities. At its meeting on February eighteenth, the City Council approved Mayor Meister's request for an item, for an item to be added to tonight's agenda to consider a letter of support for the establishment of a League of California Charter Cities to the Huntington Beach City Council and a declaration for the establishment of a League of Charter Cities. The correspondence and declaration for the establishment of the League of Charter Cities was included in the staff report as an attachment. Staff's recommendation, the City Council consider a letter of support for the establishment of a League of California Charter Cities to the Huntington Beach City Council and declaration for the establishment of League of Charter Cities. Staff's available questions.
Okay, thank you for the report. This was one of my motions as well, and so I'll leave it. You know, there are many regulations where the state is overreaching on municipalities across the state in this direction, trying to unite with Huntington Beach and calling them to action, because they have led the fight in the state of California as far as fighting for local control. What's the point of having this elected body if we don't have those powers or elect, or local control and being able to dictate how the city is ran? So with that, I drafted this letter in, in trying to promote a League of Charter Cities. If we could unite charter cities across the state to take a stand, it may give the municipalities a leg in the fight against tyranny in this state. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it to the City Council. Councilman Green, you have any comments?
No, I think I was fully on board with this from the start, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Rivas, any comments?
Not at this time.
Vice Mayor McHurvey.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to put a couple of examples out there for the public. And we, you can read this when you, when you go out and, and you read about what's going on in our state. Our state is taking over so much and regulating so much that there are very few things that the local community can do now. And being a charter city and a constitutional city, we're also being mandated to use prevailing wage labor to fix our roads. A lot of people wonder, well, why aren't our roads fixed? Well, one of the observations that you could make is, well, maybe there's something wrong with the city council. But if the roads cost five times as much as if we did them ourselves, because the state mandates that, we're already a poor city and a poor county, it makes it so we can't fix our roads. That's the overreach coming from the state, and that's not something that we have a lot of control over, and less, and less, and less as the years go by. So in uniting with other cities that are pushing back against this overreach, gives the autonomy that a constitutional city can operate and fix its roads, for example. And we can fix, we would have great roads. I remember growing up, they weren't all that great some years, and they were better other years, but we're in a position right now where if we want to pave the roads in our city, it'll take, we're never going to get it done with prevailing wage. And I want to, I want to make this comment about the economy, too. Money that's spent here stays here. If we can hire local and we can insource building our roads, the money stays here. If we have to hire prevailing wage and I've got to hire someone that comes from another city, the money goes there. That means they're taking the money out of our city because the state is telling us that's what we have to do. That's what this is about. It's about the state overreaching in many areas. The roads is the one that everyone can see and they drive on them every day and they understand it. But this is to unite with other charter cities and say, "Let's build a legal fund and let's have a League of Charter Cities that pay dues and get together and lobby against the state to keep our local home rule alive." Because it's, it's slowly dying right now at the pace of change in this state, and they're taking over where home rule isn't making much sense anymore. And that's what this is about. And I appreciate you bringing this forward, Mayor, because even the situation before that we're talking about protecting the safe spaces, this is because of the overreach of the state. The state has come in and mandated we do things like put tampons in the boys' restrooms for sixth graders that make no sense. And that's, we don't have much control over that. And so, you know, I'm connecting the other issue to this, but it's, it's to use some examples to say, "We have to have some say locally." And right now, the funding is connected to it, so I appreciate that the new leadership in our country is starting to connect the funding back the other way, to push it back in the other direction. I think it's time for the charter cities to come together and stand up for each other. We're not all going to agree on everything. We're always going to have people that disagree, but let's have a healthy, civil conversation about what's really going on, and, you know, maybe we can cut through some of the emotion that we see out there and do what's right for our city, because that's what our city's all about.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. And I, I'd just add, even with our library, you know, we, we have funds for the library, but, and we could build a great library with the funds we have, but being a, have, being forced to hire prevailing wage union contract, we can't afford the library. And, and it's, it's very unfortunate here in Porterville, and, and even at that, it, they intrude upon zoning and building low-income housing and, and affect the way cities are built, and, and it is a definite overreach. Councilman Beltran, any comments?
I, I like the idea of this in principle. I, it, it takes a lot of effort for something like this to eventually be created. I know this letter is reaching out to Huntington Beach. I was doing some research on them. Their general fund is two-hundred-and-eighty-five million. Ours is thirty-five. They have a little bit, a little bit more to play with, so I, I appreciate your invitation for them to lead this. But, you know, I think this might, a win-win on this, could be creating a, a caucus with the League of Cities, of a charter members caucus that specifically works on things, there's a hundred and, let me see.
Twenty-six.
Hundred-and-twenty-six cities in, in California. I think all but, well, there's four-hundred-something cities in the state of California. I think only like two or three don't belong to the League of Cities. So it's great resources already. How about asking them to create a caucus for those that are charter cities, so that maybe when we go to conferences, or we'll have actually on, if you go to their website, a whole resources or references for charter cities, and we can help. There's already a, a whole, whole organization that's fighting for local control, but maybe a little more niche for charter cities. I think that'd be a good, so we could kind of move forward with this to see where that goes, but also maybe trick, create a caucus with the League of Cities.
I, I think that's a great idea in addition.
Councilmember Beltran, actually, to, just to tag on to that, it just so happens, I did get a call from General Counsel from the League of Cities today. So, and, two things. So they're, they're totally, they're, they're totally on board if, if their, you know, group wants to form a charter cities. They are concerned about the name, it would, it's very close to the current name, so they would suggest the name get changed, otherwise there could be a legal issue, because it's very close to the, because it says, it's League of California Cities versus League of Charter Cities, so. But that being said, they also said, but they have no issue with you guys wanting to form a group or anything, so that was not a problem. But they also mentioned, "By the way, if they want to do this through the League, they absolutely can, because they have a provision that allows groups to self-form within, within it and, and have that."
I, I've seen some of the caucuses.
Yeah, the caucuses, so you could, you could, you could explore that to see if there's interest in doing that as an option, or even in tandem. It doesn't, they're not necessarily mutually exclusive ideas, but it certainly probably would be the, you know, not as expensive as going the route of having to form something.
It's an interesting thought.
I think if they could even have conferences specific to charter cities, so we don't have to go to the conferences necessarily for everybody, we could have specific ones that are for, I, I, to me, that would cut a lot of the timing, and, and they already have a lot of resources already.
I, I think it's.
I, I love this idea, and I say we do both. Great input, Julia. I'm of the mind that I want to get out of the charter cities because of what they lobby for, and I don't want to be in a caucus within charter, the League of Charter Cities.
No, you're talking the.
League of California Cities that is still lobbying for things that are continuing the overreach. So I don't know if it would be as effective, but I'd be willing to try. I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I, I do as well.
So maybe call it like Charter City Alliance or something, you know, but.
Or we could just stick with League of Charter Cities and say, "Bring it on."
Can't give, yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'll make a motion. Is, is there any other comments? I'm going to make a motion to go forward with the letter. I love the recommendation, it's something.
No, no, not for sure.
It, it's something that I think that we should look at. If, if the Cal League of Cities is opening, open to form a caucus of charter cities, I think that may be something that I'd be willing to join and, and look into, and, and see what we can't get done with, with that organization, especially if they're wanting to go and fight for charter cities.
And I'd just make the comment at the conference we went to, that seemed to be the tone of the, of the whole. And I just make the comment at the conference we went to, that seemed to be the tone of the, of the whole training session was that the new elec- newly-elected really wanna change course. So there might be hope there for that to actually happen.
Every year I've gone, well, the last two years I've gone to those conferences, uh, because it is for the new elected and there's a big turnover and a lot of new, new blood, um, that is a lot of the direction is local control. It may not seem like it, but when we started getting into the, um, actual courses, they are talking about local control. Um, yeah, yeah, sometimes you have to play the game to get anywhere. Um, but I don't, my only recommendation is with your motion is if we're gonna send this out as an official letter, is to strike the League of Charter Cities and let's just find another word for now. Uh, if we're gonna officially send this, uh, for establishment of the League of Charter City, let's just find another name to put that.
I, I, I think, that's, how are they gonna sue us for saying League of Charter Cities?
Copyright by, or like, you know, a trademark.
League of Cal Cities, it's a league. They don't own the word league and it's, it's different.
I, I haven't, I literally got the call this afternoon, so I can't tell you exactly how it is, but.
But this goes back to the point.
I mean, do you really, the other thing is, do you really wanna create confusion?
Yeah, right.
Because don't you wanna have a separate identity?
You want a different identity.
You'll be assumed to be, you don't wanna be assumed to be part of the, of the League of California Cities if you're really trying to create a distinction. So, I mean, just for clarity purposes.
Charter Cities is the distinction.
If you wanna keep it, I'm gonna vote against it. If you wanna change it, I'm for it. It's, it's a, it's a technicality. It's just.
And this isn't even the form of anything. It's just a, a letter going out and.
Yeah, it's really only because it's in the draft declaration, but I, I don't have a, I mean, you guys can do what you're gonna do. It's fine. I just was letting you know.
Yeah, no, I, and I appreciate that, City Attorney. Um, is there any, any opinion on this? Is, uh, Councilman Beltran has, has voiced his concern, um, and, and the City Attorney has voiced her concern. Um, any comments? Vice Mayor?
Well, I have, I have.
Councilman Rivas.
Can we maybe tweak the, the name a little bit? Cause I don't wanna get it confused. And it might be a trademark issue, um, but I, I don't know that until I do, you know, um, the lawyer does the research on that. But in regards to that, maybe we can tweak it a little bit. So they, we can be a separate identity from the City of California Cities. So, uh, with that, I'll leave it.
Yeah, the League of.
And I think as a letter, it doesn't matter. If we actually create it, we can talk about the name.
Yeah, that's what I, that's exactly what I'm getting.
Getting sued tomorrow for.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I just don't want it to be.
This is just a draft and, and they could totally take it and crumble it and throw it in the trash. It could go nowhere. Uh, so with that, my motion is to go forward with the way it is. Um, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any other comments? Excuse me, or if you'd like to talk, you could do it after the meeting. Uh, thank you. And there's an opportunity for oral communication as well. So with that, we have a first, we have a second. Uh, we'll call for the vote. Passes for one. Okay, moving on to agenda, or excuse me, schedule matter number twenty-six. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Agenda Item Twenty-Six is the Review of City Council Agenda, Agenda Publication Timeline. At its meeting on February the eighteenth, the City Council approved Vice Mayor McHurvey's request for an item to be added to tonight's agenda. To consider changing the date, the City Council, Council Agendas are posted for public review to up to seven days prior to the City Council meeting. Government Code Section Five Four Nine Four Two Point, Point Two A One, um, provides that seventy-two hour notice be given before a regular meeting. The City Council, City of Porterville holds regular scheduled City Council meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of each month in accordance with Ordinance Seventeen Ninety-Two. Historically, the City of Porterville has published agendas for public review the Thursday evening prior to the regular scheduled meeting on the following Tuesday, providing a hundred and twenty-hour or five-day notice. City of Porterville strives to produce agenda items.
Reidenhauer, I really appreciate you guys putting this on the agenda. Um, in the interest of transparency, and we heard again tonight, this is two meetings in a row from, uh, some issues that are going on with the airport and some lease agreements and things. And, um, so there's still kind of this hangover from that event that happened two weeks ago. But I believe that it would benefit all the people of our city and it would benefit this council if this stuff was available sooner. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to propose that we go back and produce a couple or three, two or three options that, on how we might be able to provide this, um, information sooner. We're meeting all of the minimal obligations for reporting, but we need to, there's so much in here at times that we need to make sure and give the public a chance to go through that and the people in this diocese a chance to go through that so that we're not rushing through it at the end of a week or the beginning of a week, um, or on a holiday weekend like it was two weeks ago. So I'd like to get a couple of options that come back and then talk about the, the trade-offs that come with them. So if there, if you have an option that's publish it seven days, what are the trade-offs? If you have an obligatory, it's publish it six days or five days or three days or keep it the same, you know, so that we can compare and contrast what the risks are. I know that might delay some things getting on the agenda potentially, depending on how we do it. But I'd really like us to consider what options we really have so we can make a decision about what we wanna do with it. I have enjoyed, uh, the staff being able to make themselves available on Friday right after it becomes available, um, so that I can get through that on a Friday, for example, instead of doing it on a Monday or Tuesday. Um, but I just would like to get some options, uh, to brought back so that we can discuss those options and the trade-offs that go with them. So just keep it simple. You know, we publish it, you know, seven days in advance. What are the trade-offs? If we publish it five days, what are the trade-offs? If we keep it the same? And just make it so we can make a comparison and a good decision.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McHurvey. Uh, Councilman Beltran, any comments?
Well, I like that recommendation just to give us options, uh, so we could all make an informed decision. Uh, the way I always felt about this is, yeah, there are times where, man, this is a lot to get through. And, uh, we don't often table things and I want council to feel comfortable about tabling something. You thought about pulling some of the leases? I, I hope you feel comfortable in that you don't wanna delay this and you don't, please feel comfortable pulling something, you know, that we, maybe we need to table it for later. So always feel comfortable in tabling something. Um, I'm okay with looking at the options. I like this timeframe just because over the last two years I've realized there's things that are being asked for that we wanted, might, we take action on and it takes staff a lot of time. They're not just sitting waiting for our, what we're doing. They have their own daily, um, tasks. Um, that bringing it up to a Thursday evening for them really helps them get to the last minute item for us to look at. So you're right, it could delay and I like seeing the different options. What does a seven-day, six-day, five-day option look like? Um, so I, I don't mind looking at that. I just always had the option. If I wanted to table something, I would table it.
You know, I think we should, we should look at a ten-day as an option to see what the trade-offs are. So let's do, let's do a ten-day and a seven-day and a five-day, something like that. And then, and I would just say that if you, if you make this available to the public ten days in advance, then they have a chance to look at it and then they have a chance to call me directly. Talk to me about it. And I don't have to put that pressure on the staff to explain that to me. I can go and engage the public myself. And so I think that's good for the city and it's good, think it's good for the people and transparency.
Councilman Green, you have any comments?
Yeah, no comments. Thank you.
Councilman Rivas.
You know, I'm new to this and, um, you know, it, um, I do rec, I do recommend looking at, at some options here and, uh, we can, we can go from there. But, you know, uh, this all began when, with the last council meeting with, uh, the issues with the airport leasing and stuff. And, you know, that was a lot to get through. And, um, so maybe that's what brought this into fruition. But, um, I'd like to look at some recommendations, but if, if, uh, we'll, we'll play with that and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see what, uh, comes out of it if, and also get some information from the staff. Uh, their recommendations on it and how it would impact them. So with that, um, I, I, I look forward to, uh, moving this along, but, uh, but not do anything at, at this particular junction, but just get the recommendation and see where we can, uh, hopefully work something out with, uh, but I would also like the staff recommendations also, how it would impact them also. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Rivas. So, um, it sounds like we have a direction. They're wanting, uh, options. Do you have any comments, City Manager?
Um, staff can bring, bring back options. I'll, I'll give you a quick overview of what, what that may look like, um, to, to add a few days. Um, so right now in our process, so tomorrow, all the action that was taken today, staff takes action on tomorrow. So that is, tomorrow is making what, decisions that the council made tonight, putting that into motion to, to fruition, to move forward. Then on Thursday, I require that staff has all agenda items in for, in the system for, to staff reports to get, to be, to be drafted. So we could start moving forward on that. So how this works is in the next week, we go through and everything is, the research is done, items are finalized. Then they go through a multi-level review to ensure of completeness across departments to complete a, a final product for the council and the public. So this is a, a lengthy process. So in just, to produce an agenda earlier, what it will do is essentially just push back those days to where staff would have an item on an agenda. So for example, um, when an item is in, added to an agenda and other matters, we will, we will then just discuss, you know, more than likely, it would not be feasible to be on that next agenda. It would be maybe one agenda out or two agendas out, depending on how we're looking at, at doing that. And so, um, it, we, we could, um, on this as well, as we have public hearings and, and those, those items, um, getting, you know, the change would be a little bit of hiccup to change to those. It could happen. What will happen then is it would just be, um, a pre-planning of that for projects that are coming forth. So people would have to understand that. So there would be, um, with change, there's always a, a little bit of pain. Um, and so not necessarily, I would say, from the staff level, but it may be on the project level of where items would go and essentially have a, a comment period, for example, in on an environmental review to have that, then to be able to draft a staff report based upon that term ending. You would then delay that two weeks or four weeks from council.
Approval.
Yeah, so, so that, that's the, the give and take. Um, and we can bring back a, another item that specifically lays that out. But in general, that's what you will see. Um, right now, we are one of the more flexible agencies um, with this is we really try to be flexible and responsive to the council in getting items on as quickly as possible for consideration. Um, also something to note, we would more than likely occur if we do publish, um, say, ten days in advance, there may be, you know, more amended agendas that, that you would see coming forth. Um, for example, we may have amended agendas in regard to closed-session items or things of that nature that may come up in the in-between. And so, um, don't be alarmed if there's a change and then you see we post an agenda ten days in advance and then within that's, prior to the seventy-two hour Brown Act deadline, that there's an amended agenda. Um, historically, when we have posted amended, amended agendas, oftentimes it's a, a very small change, maybe an addition of a, um, closed-session item. We often get a lot of feedback from the public, uh, in questioning of why was this agenda amended? And it kind of brings up a lot of questioning of, of that answer of, of what was changed. But staff is, uh, more than happy to, to do that and bring that item back. I just wanna take the opportunity here, um, to not delay that, kind of to let the council have some consideration of, of looking at that. That's the trade-off. It's essentially how quickly does the council want to be able to take action on items? Staff can adjust. Um, it just, like you said, there's a transition time that it would be. Um, then it would just be set in, in motion on that and it would just be an adaptation there.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, I, uh, from my position, I don't wanna hobble the council. But I, I think we have three, uh, members up here that are, are wanting more details on it. And so I'm, 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 I'm thinking that's the direction we'll go. So you'll bring this back. We're not gonna make a motion tonight, but you'll bring it back in another meeting with the direction of, of bringing us options and consequences of the options.
You guys wanted five, seven, and ten days? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
What, what about like one day?
Yeah, for the, for the record, um, we currently provide a five-day. So the five-day would what be as standard, what we do today. Then there would be a seven-day and a ten-day.
Okay, let's, can, can we have a six and a seven?
For, for clarification, a, a six and a seven's gonna be the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just.
Okay. Yeah, then seven and a ten? Is that what you're thinking?
Five would be what we're doing. So what you're gonna get is what we're doing now.
Right, yeah.
Just a five-day, seven-day, and then ten-day or like.
That'll work.
Now, the county does a ten-day, right? Is that what they do?
I'll, I'll have to, to, to verify that. I, I believe that TCAG does a ten-day, but they also have one meeting a month.
Yeah, that's a difference.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the county publishes ten days in advance. They just require more time before getting, you know, before things end up on the agenda.
Oh, so the, the, the supervisors get the agenda before the people do?
No, oh, no, they can't.
Okay, that's, I was.
Do they get it ten days in advance?
I don't think so.
I, I don't know the answer.
Seven days in advance? Once a week, but seven days in adv- oh, that's what it is. Seven days in advance, but once a week. So it's really, you, you, so it's published two, you know, you're seeing two weeks before, basically. Yeah.
And I, I do know they're very regimented and so their items are due well in advance of what the items, how, how staff brings items here is, like I said, the, the basis of how we operate was to be as flexible as possible for the city council. But more than happy to, to look at that. It would just be an adjustment on how quickly items come forth.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, well, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Um, we, we'll move on to now schedule matter or agenda item number two. Um, Vice Mayor, you, you pulled this. Uh, you lead the, the way.
I just pulled this for a quick discussion. Um, this is the Authorization to Repair City Well Number AP-Dash-Two. Mr. Knight, I just wanna ask a question about this one. I noticed there's four bids on that. Uh, the second bid on that is for a company that's more local, Ducor, but it's three hundred dollars more. Is the bidding process on this, do we have a preference for a local or is this something we can choose? Just wanna ask for some information on that bidding process.
So the app, the, um, the quotes we received were from Exeter, Terabella, Talarri, and Visalia. And so it was strictly how quick they can respond and for the cheapest rate.
Okay. I, I really would like to, if it's just based on that, I'd like to, uh, uh, consider that we use WPI. It's three hundred dollars more and the money's gonna be closer to home, cause it's not gonna go out to Visalia. Would that be a problem if I were to, to recommend that or make a motion to that?
I, I don't know how fast they can respond. So, um, if they have the materials in stock or if it's a six-to-eight-week lead time or those details, uh, behind that. Um, so staff paid the adjustment based off of cost and availability to, to serve. So, um, I can look into that.
Okay.
If that, if that's the case, or if that's council's direction, happy to take that direction.
Could, uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we consider that and if they do have it available, that we consider using the Ducor bid?
Can I just get clarification real quick? So we don't need to go with the lowest bid in this circumstance?
Council has always went with the lowest bid. At, at that point in time.
Is this pursuant to our formal bidding process or was this done as a?
It's not, it's not a sealed.
It's an informal? Okay. I don't know. I'd have, I'd have to look at it. I don't know off the top of my head.
So, okay, i- if we push this forward, this isn't, it has to go to the next meeting as a schedule matter.
As a schedule matter?
Well, I, I'm just.
We go as a consent item, what, after we review it to double-check whether or not we have to go. Sometimes we're, we're bound by law to go with the lowest.
Right.
And so I'd have to look at this one and see what it is, if we can.
I, I, I like where you're going with this, Vice Mayor, and just to, uh, my thought is maybe we add language where we go with the, it, it, find some kind of discretion where we go with the most local, the closest local, if it's within a certain dollar range.
So it, under, under the charter, if we were, this is something we can consider changing in our charter to give you flexibility so that you can have, build in, like with lower level, because this is a lower level bid. Often what you'll see is authority to have an informal process that gives you maybe some leeway. But right now, we don't, we, we're kind of stuck with our charter language and, and I don't know, we'd have to double-check and see if this was something.
It's the first time I, it's the first time it's come up with me.
First time it's been asked, so we'll have to look.
Also, Mr. Sanchez had a comment on this item as well.
Also, Mr. Sanchez had a comment on this item as well.
Yeah.
Director Sanchez?
Thank you. To add to that, the public contract code does say that we shall follow a formal bid process when an amount exceeds 5,000.
Right. But it wasn't a sealed bid. It was just.
No, but the quantity calls for bid process.
Right.
I suspect we may be limited.
I like, I like where you're going with this, Vice Mayor. As far as, you're, you're saying we want to hire the, the closest local and prioritize that, but right now, we're in a situation where it seems like we, we have to go with the lowest bid. And in all fairness, it's still a Tulare County business, so it's not a total loss in that aspect. But this is something that we could look at for the Charter Review Committee and possible language we add to give the city council the tools to hire the most local businesses.
I, I learned the most from my failures.
It was a good conversation.
Okay, so with that, yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Just a brief comment on that. One thing, these have come up before and that was my, I think one time we did revert to the second bidder and it was a nominal thing, it might have been less than $100. But one thing I've learned is the, the company out of, let's say Visalia, they might have an actual employee who's in the Porterville area that will do work in, in Porterville. So, you know, they live here, they pay their mortgage here, the kids go to school here. Similar to Ducor, they might be at a Ducor, but they might have personnel in Tulare that will work, you know, that's just where their home office is.
That's a great point.
That's come up too before in questioning. So we, we just don't know where their personnel are distributed throughout the Tulare County.
Okay, great point. All right, if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation in hiring Carver Pump Services.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, call for the vote. Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to schedule matter number 17. City Manager?
Your item, I, oh, I believe the next item is number 16?
Oh, you're, you're right. Let's do 16.
Yes. Item 16 is the approval of the reorganization within the Parks and Leisure Department, Parks Division. Staff's available via staff report or answer any questions. Mr. Moore is available with staff report.
And I'll, I'll bring it back to the council. Councilman Beltran, you polled this item. Which, which direction are you trying to go here?
So yeah, just before we formally pass something like this, I just wanted to reiterate my comments from the last time this came up was, my concern was, and I asked Director Moore to get some details on this. So we had a six-month education for those dealing with homelessness out there. And then the last meeting we had, we went into enforcement mode, which had only been maybe like 10 or 12 days. It was a very short period of time. And we were giving some stats on the encampments that had been cleaned up. Could you give us some numbers roughly from, let's say, December, January maybe, and then up to date of how we're looking monthly on encampment cleanups?
So the January numbers were 26 encampments. February was 27 and December was also 26. So those have been pretty consistent in those last three months.
Okay. So the reason I was wondering what the stats were, we know first going into enforcement, we didn't, the numbers might be kind of high because there hadn't been any enforcement yet. So I was just wondering what from December, January looked like going into February. So we're pretty consistent as far as what we had been doing before the enforcement had happened anyways. We were just kind of enforcing, not necessarily encampment, but just when there were issues.
And those numbers are when, you know, the PD goes out, they make the verbal contact and the initial attempt is to, you know, let them know if a 72-hour notice is warranted, if they do have items there and they're not able to move right away, then that's when that time starts ticking. But those numbers that I gave you are strictly for the ones that have been left behind and the encampment crew goes in and cleans them up. So PD has been in contact with, you know, obviously quite a few more than that.
Okay. So I, I just want to get the numbers as far as what staff has been able to do, that it's been, it's been consistent with what the ask is. The second major part for me, the concern is the, we're not, there is, there's no certification, there's no added, really work task that's being added to the individuals that we're looking at giving a dollar increase.
As far as the certifications go, all the Parks Division gets the certifications on things like bloodborne pathogens and dealing with hazardous material and exposure and things like that. So we're in the process of constantly going through those with all the staff. So they're all.
It's regular training and, and, okay. Can I imagine like even like the custodials who clean up the parks area, these restrooms and stuff, they, they come across stuff like that and they're not necessarily in this department, but they are, come across situations like that. So when this first got brought to us, it seemed like a nominal thing of potentially $30,000. My concern was going forward that arbitrarily giving a dollar raise, which I believe is roughly 5% increase to this one area, and I think it's range 173, I can't find my note here. My concern is the domino effect of people who are range 170, 168 saying, hey, you know, maybe I want a bump, or people who might be range 178 who are going like, well, now these people are making the same as I am, but yet my job tasks are, are greater than theirs. And so my concern was more that this isn't necessarily a $30,000 swing. This is going to be a domino effect up and down the board of 5% increases when, you know, I think on a closed session, we're looking at all departments or their contracts are coming up. I did a rough estimate, I know this is very, very rough, but 200 employees at full-time at $1 increase is $384,000 a year. And I know we have part-time, we have other, you know, overtime, stuff like that. And so I, I just don't like from up here at the dais, making executive decisions rather than saying, hey, let's see if we could pay our employees more. You know, obviously the contracts are coming up and the city manager, the finance director will work on that to see what we're able to do. I just didn't like coming up here and arbitrarily saying, hey, let's give a dollar to these people, we want to get some momentum, we want to get some work done. The stats show that they're, they were doing this before this ever happened. I believe they'll continue to do a good job. This isn't a matter of we can't find, you know, applicants, you know, we're struggling because we're not paying enough. It's adequately, adequately staffed. And so I just, before we just push this through, to just remember that this isn't just a $1 increase in this one department. This is going to be a domino effect up and down departments, fire, police, everywhere. And so I just want to make sure that we see that number is, isn't just that small dollar. This could be potentially 300, $400,000. And I don't feel comfortable, as much as I've learned about our city, our finance, we're going to have a study session soon on our city finance, that we put that burden on the finance department and city manager in negotiations that are coming up. So I just would like for us to not go forward with this, nothing's been signed, to let the city manager and the finance department work out what raises are prudent, especially in a recession. That's why I pulled this item. I'm not saying we shouldn't pay our, our staff adequately, but I just didn't like arbitrarily picking on, picking out one and saying, for whatever reason, they deserve that dollar. I'm sure city manager will work very hard to pay our staff adequately. So I just like council to consider that it's just not this one position that will be affected.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. Vice Mayor McCurvy, you have any comments?
Yeah, just a follow-up because I think you raised a great point because the direction wasn't to give somebody a raise. Director Moore, there's two job classifications there, right?
Those we're talking about here, there's currently an encampment abatement, and then there's a weed abatement.
Right, and there are two classifications based on what Councilman Beltran's saying?
For the full-time, yes. The, the full-time weed abatement gets 5% more than the, I'm sorry, the full-time encampment gets 5% more than the full-time weed abatement. There's two full-time weed abatement, there's one full-time encampment. And then for the part-timer, that's where the dollar raise comes in.
Right, so that's the fee difference, but the, there's a classification difference too, right?
Have to maybe look to our HR expert or.
The classification is, excuse me, but the classification is just based upon the rate. So that number of classification that they refer to as a 173 or a 178 is referred to the, the pay classification.
Okay.
That's what you're referring to.
So the, the direction that I gave for clarity was you have two classifications under the same umbrella. One gets paid at a higher rate and it has different responsibility. I wanted to make those both the same. That wasn't give one a raise, it was to take the ones that did, had a lower classification, give them some training so they're at the same classification and then unify the team. So it's not a raise, it's building the team.
Correct. That's what the, the item here, but before the council today, it, what it is, is, is a consolidation of the two divisions. So you have weed abatement and encampment abatement. It is bringing them together and creating one umbrella, if you would, job description. And so there would be no longer a weed abatement or a homeless encampment abatement. There would essentially be an abatement worker, if that makes sense. In essence, what you, but in doing that, you have the weed abatement team would be brought up and so given a 5% raise for those individuals as it's the same classification now.
They don't get a raise, they have more responsibility.
They go hand in hand.
Right. So frame it that way also.
Same responsibilities, right?
They get paid more because they got more responsibility now.
Yes, but it is equal to, to greater pay. It's a 5%.
Yes, it is greater pay, not a raise.
And, and in all fairness, the weed abatement crew was doing homeless abatement and, and helping, or excuse me, not homeless, encampment abatement duties without getting that pay. So this.
They were getting that pay, but on rare occasions.
So it's basically just changing classification of job.
Director Moore, can you clarify for that? Were they getting, was the weed abatement getting a bump, a dollar an hour when they're doing encampment abatement?
No, they were not.
Okay, because we, we had that conversation and this is where this stemmed from, is, is in trying, trying to empower Parks and Leasures to, to be able to be more effective in dealing with the homeless encampments in the city of Porterville and also weed abatement. This goes hand in hand and this is making one umbrella, a team, and yes, it is a pay increase, but it also is more duties in, in serving the people of Porterville. Councilman Rivas, do you have any comments?
Well, quick question. Well, I had it, what am I thinking of right now? Are we breaking any bargaining unit going forward with this now that you're coming into this arena?
So the Human Resources Department went and met with the bargaining unit and negotiated this, took the offer and the representatives gladly accepted the pay increase.
So what we're talking about?
Yeah, so this is already rolling. So could you imagine this, Ray, or excuse me, Councilman Beltran? Could you imagine that staff has already, your boss has already came to you and said, hey, city council wants to give you a dollar raise? And then tomorrow, they get told that they are not getting that dollar raise.
That's why I think it's bad precedent to do it from up here.
Fair enough. Councilman Green, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's.
Just to close the conversation, if I may, is this creating a $350,000 risk?
A slippery slope.
We, we will be entering negotiations and so there, there are risks with this of.
But is it, is it a prudent risk? Is it a gamble? Is it a small risk? I mean, we're being, I was just hearing that this is a big deal and I want to make sure we knock this down.
I'll have more information on that in the coming weeks. I, I don't, I don't have a specific answer to that. I don't, haven't met with the bargaining units.
Yuli, could you comment on that?
I want to add one more thing. I think we should leave raises and negotiations with the manager and the bargaining units and not in the city council. And I'll just leave that with that.
The negotiation is with Yuli. Yuli, could you comment on this, please?
Yeah, so as the city manager said, we can't really assure you of whether the risk is going to be high or not, but employees do talk and I believe they are already aware that this is happening for a specific division. So they'll probably be looking at that come negotiations.
And everybody talks, that's normal, right? That's not, that's not a risk because what you did is you repaired something that was a problem. Is that correct?
Yeah, we combined it to build a bigger team per council's direction.
Because we were asking some of those folks to do something that they weren't, you know, trained to do. Right, so I think we actually solved the problem in this process. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, so we have a bigger team now and we are putting them on through the correct training to be able to handle.
Thank you, Yuli. How does the negotiation go? I mean, it seems like it's simple.
So for this one, we call it a meet and consult. What I did was I reached out to their bargaining unit representative. I said, I gave them what the council's direction was. I sent them the job descriptions and had them review to make sure that they would agree to do these duties. And he said, yeah, they agreed with it and agreed with the pay increase.
Terrific. Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Yuli. Okay, are there any other comments? I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion, we go with the recommendations.
I'll second. If there's no other comments, call for the vote. Passes 4-1. Okay, moving on to schedule matter number 17. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Schedule matter number 17 tonight is a request for proclamation of women's rights. Staff can present a staff report or answer any questions you may like.
We'll bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor McCurvy, you polled this item. Go ahead and lead the charge.
Okay, so I read through this and I would like to sign on to this, but I have some issues with some of the wording. So I'd like to remove some words and do a little word smithing here. In the area of right to safety and privacy, it says women and girls shall have the right. Just remove the word shall. That's just awkward. The second one is the right to fair and equal athletic opportunities. It says women and girls shall have the right. They, they have the right. Remove the word shall, please. And I think the next one on the next page, the right to motherhood and family protections, women shall have the right. Remove the word shall on there, please.
Okay, women have.
And the right to economic freedom and opportunity. It also says women shall and just remove the word shall. I just think it's awkward. It's over, it's too wordy and those, it makes it hard to understand. So I just want to make those changes to this. That's why I pulled the item, just to make it better.
Okay, I, I like it. Are there any other comments? Okay.
Before, real quick, I was just noticing at the very end of that, it says, at the very end of the proclamation, it says we reaffirm our commitment to, to, I think it's the protection.
Oh, should be protecting.
To protecting the rights.
Yeah, so the tense, the tense is wrong.
Protecting the rights of women today, tomorrow, and for.
For.
I think probably for the.
I didn't see that.
I want to, I just noticed it too. So I'm guessing for the future?
Yeah, let's fix that.
Thank you, City Attorney.
Yeah, good catch. I didn't see that.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Okay, we're looking for a motion.
I make a motion, we go with the adjusted changes.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the shalls in, in these areas and then fix the wording at the end. uh, uh, for the future, um, and I'll second that motion. Councilman Rivas, no, there's still room for, for comments.
No, well, just gonna, just gonna go second the motion, that's all.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero, okay, moving on to schedule matter number eighteen, city manager.
Thank you, your honor, the, um, final scheduled matter for tonight is the request for proclamation of California Arbor Week, March seventh through March fourteenth. Um, staff can write a staff report or answer any questions.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council, Vice Mayor, you pulled this item, go ahead and.
I did, I just, I need to say a couple of things about this item, um, and I just, I thought, I thought of this when I was in physics in, in high school, that an object in motion tends to stay in motion. We were having a nice struggle, uh, in the last meeting about taking out the trees down Main Street. And so we had gone in a direction, and it was old council, new council, and we kind of went back and forth on some things, and we took out the trees. The irony is that we're emboding here on, signing on to the proclamation for Arbor Week. And so we are very, very much committed to trees, even though we just took all the trees out on Main Street. And, uh, I wanted to also make a comment, uh, about Kathy and what she does down in the Tulare River Parkway with the Parkway Association. It broke my heart last summer when I, I watched her come in there, she came back from vacation, and she pours her heart and soul, and she planted all kinds of trees and plants out there, and we turned the water off on her. And it killed a whole bunch of the plants that she planted. And it was just, it was heartbreaking because she put so much into that. And so I'm just, just really happy to, to make that comment out here and say, you know, we will fully support Kathy and what she does with all the volunteers down there, and signing on to this is a no-brainer for Arbor Week. And we really want to give her a lot of, uh, praise, attention, and support, and encouragement, even with, when she has these setbacks like she had last summer, so. Um, I just wanted to make those comments on this, and, um, you know, and we're going to have some nice trees on Main Street. I, I really fought hard, I wasn't going to go tie myself to the tree and say, don't cut this tree down, but I thought about it. I love trees too, so our, this is near and dear to my heart, and I, I think that downtown's going to look great, and this, uh, declaration of Arbor Week is awesome. So that's the comments I wanted to make.
Well, thank you for that, uh, if there's any other comments, uh, sounds like you're ready to make a motion.
Make a motion, we go with, uh, recommendations, go forward with the proclamation.
I'll second. If there's no other comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, we're going to move on to reports, AB one, two, three, four reports. This is time for all AB one thirty-four reports required pursuant. I'm not going to read all that, let's move on to Tulare County Task Force of Homeless, met February nineteenth.
I want to turn that over to, uh, Ms. Calderon, who has a report on that.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, as mentioned, the meeting was held on the nineteenth of last month. Um, there was a couple items on the agenda, mostly it was more discussion and presentations. Uh, no real action was taken. Uh, the first one was, uh, just notification that they're moving away from the Facebook live streaming to a different system that the current Board of Supervisors uses, just for easier, um, you know, uh, live streaming and participation. Uh, they also did a presentation, um, on the Care Court. And that was by King's View, so they're currently doing an outreach, uh, to all the jurisdictions and different agencies to make, uh, bring awareness of their, uh, contract to, uh, run that program. Then, uh, KTHA did a presentation on the point in time that took place in January. And they are, uh, deduplicating data right now, so they didn't have any numbers. They did say, uh, say that the report is due in June, uh, but hopefully we have some preliminary numbers prior to that. Um, we usually do around April is when they're starting to compile the report. They didn't mention that, but I'll just bring you that bit of information. Um, then the county presented, uh, Resource Management Agency presented their housing element and an overview of how it went with, uh, for theirs, and that it was recently adopted. Um, and then the final item was, uh, presentation on, uh, the homeless housing assistance prevention funding that the county received, um, and there was a little bit of discussion on that, um, and then they weren't sure if there'd be a, a new round, but they did apply for the last round. Um, and then the next meeting will be March nineteenth.
Thank you, Director Calderon. Uh, are there any comments? No? Okay, move on to, uh, Porterville Area Development Authority, PATA, met February twenty-first, uh, Councilman Beltran. That was canceled, all right. So we'll, then we'll move on to myself, Tulare County Association of Governance. We met Monday, February twenty-fourth, um, some of the things that portrayed to the, the city of Porterville, um, the transportation action discussion item, this was informational only, uh, implementation status of federally funded projects, there's one point one three seven million dollars going to the realignment of West Roundabout, West Street Roundabout. Um, and then also, uh, California Transportation Commission, uh, three point four seven million for Roundabout at one ninety, and Westwood Runabout, Roundabout, um, looking to come in April? Was that, did I get that right, city manager?
I was trying to bid.
Trying to bid in April, okay. And then also, um, uh, Mr. Tree was appointed to, uh, the Transit Plan, uh, Roundtable, uh, Regional Transit Plan Roundtable Appointment, so congratulations, Mr. Tree. And then also I had to share with, uh, at least my alternate, but I don't know if the option is for all council members, but May first, uh, is the, uh, retreat for TCAGs at St. Anthony's, uh, Three Rivers. So with that, uh, that's all I have to report with TCAG. Is there anything I missed, uh, city manager? You did a great job. Thank you, sir. And then moving on, uh, to, well, excuse me, uh, Tulare County Economic Development Corp. I met, we met, uh, February twenty-sixth. Um, the agenda was as normal going through, there was, uh, nothing that really portrayed to the city, but there was a great presentation from Cal Water. Um, Kevin McClusker gave a report on it, and it was really interesting just hearing some of the regulations from the state and how, uh, Visalia is handling, uh, their water situation and, and the con- conservation way of life. Um, and so just listening to some of these numbers that are coming out, uh, twenty twenty-four, we're supposed to be down to fifty-five gallons per person. By twenty-five, we're supposed to be down to forty-seven gallons, and by twen- twenty-thirty, uh, down to forty-two gallons per person. Um, currently, Visalia in January was at seventy-three, th- this is twenty-four, in August, they were at a hundred and eighty gallons per person, so, um, I, I made the comment that Porterville's doing a little bit better on our water conservation here, which is, uh, to the, the citizens of Porterville for, for doing that. And also listening to their fee structure, you know, we have a great thing here in Porterville, uh, being we have our own, uh, enterprise in water and, and being able to, to, uh, have that local control, where in Visalia, they, they hire, uh, a business for water, and so they're looking at, or may already have implemented, and, and Director Mike, you might, uh, excuse me, Assistant City Manager Knight, you may be able to help me with this, but are they introducing a tier system, or they already have a tier system? Do you happen to know that? I wasn't able to ask that.
I could, uh, uh, assist a little bit, so, um, I, I believe they do have a tier system.
That's what I thought, too.
They are, uh, Cal Water is governed by the CUPC.
Yeah.
And so their water rates are then not set local, they're set to state. Um, Mr. Knight can provide additional detail with that, but, uh, similar to SCE, uh, as well.
Yes, and so I was looking at it, and I was, I was going, wow, they are getting hammered. We, we're complaining here in Porterville, uh, Visalia's paying a little more for their water, so, uh, luckily, luck, lucky to have our local control on water and, and, and how we're going forward with that. Other than that, that's all I have to report, uh, with that, and we'll move on to the Cannabis Committee. They met February twenty-eighth, uh, Vice Mayor or Councilman Beltran, uh, whoever's wanting to take that.
I actually forgot my, I have some notes, but I forgot my report, but if you, if you want to, yeah, I have it in my head, too.
Yeah, um, no, I thought it was a great meeting, I think, um, you know, you could probably describe it just as well as I do, it was kind of fun having two councilmen there that disagreed, so we couldn't, uh, provide a recommendation.
We do agree, we did agree on two things, the minutes, and then the, um, uh, change, change in zoning. So we, we made progress, that, that was good. Uh, so we did, uh, author, or the recommendation was to bring it back to council, and that we could open it up to general commercial where they could move out of the downtown district, so, so we did. Well, we came to some difference of opinion when it came to the location of the adult school and the proximity and stuff, but that, we, we decided we'll bring it back to council, we can have that whole discussion.
Yeah, I, um, I really, I enjoyed having Dr. Roebach there and, uh, having a discussion about the wider issue that was at hand, and that's a real serious issue, I hope we can continue that conversation about what, uh, we can do for our kids. Uh, independent of what we talked about in the meeting, I thought that was a good sidebar.
Okay, is that, that all you guys have to report? Okay, we'll move on, uh, uh, now is the time for oral communication. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items on schedule for public hearings at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me? I think I pushed this off better.
Yes.
Okay, uh, first and foremost, my respect to the five of you, you guys all took a pretty big verbal lashing today, so my respect to you, to be able to sit up there and, um, keep calm and not take it too personally, I appreciate that. Um, for what it's worth, I am disappointed in the amount of dispersment, because I do believe that commitment to a cause is not a one-way conversation. Um, you guys talked about reducing regulations for car washes, but it's ironic to me that you support regulating bathroom use, you want to cut the regulations but add them, that was a little contradictory to me. Um, Mr. Meister, I re-, um, I respect that you pointed out the flaws in your ordinance, I think it took a lot, because there were a lot of flaws, so it was, um, nice to hear you clear some of that stuff up. Um, however, I still didn't hear anything relevant to public schools, only colleges and universities, so I would like to see how, if the ordinance were to come into effect, how it would impact our public schools. Also, you guys spoke about, um, the ordinance allowing, um, some funds for, uh, potential lawsuits that may come against the state. Um, I'm just wondering if that will come from the general fund, I think that was a little bit of an issue, um, that didn't, I'd, maybe I misheard, I, or didn't hear at all. Um, so I think some clarification on that would be, um, needed in the future as the conversation develops. Um, I did hear a couple of shocking comments that you are upset about Satanists here in your chambers, um, and questioned why they would come into this chamber, because they have that right. I understand that this is a faith-based community, but everybody's faith is different. Mr. Beltran, I do agree that there are predators out there, but not all of them are praying in our bathrooms, just want to point that out. And comparing us to prisoners was laughable. I don't think anybody in this community can relate to being a prisoner all that much, especially the people who come here and speak. Um, I mean, because I do feel strongly about the cause, I still feel like this is a little bit of an overreach. However, I do appreciate that you guys are willing to hold off on, on it until the state and federal government make more permanent decisions, I guess is a better word. Um, so I do respect that you guys are willing to hold off and continue the discussion without rushing into making any decisions. Okay, moving on from that. Your guys' league of, um, charter cities, I really like the idea of keeping your money local, but I'm just curious, and I'm sure this will come as you guys talk, oh, I'm losing time, um, uh, how much it will cost the city. And Mr. Meister, you said that there were funds to build the library, but I was just wondering where those are, because I was under the impression that we were still looking for funding. Um, also, I know she had to leave, but Mrs. Capone does do.
Please summarize the, about thirty seconds.
This is it. Uh, she does do great work, and the Tulie River Gardens look amazing, she showed me some pictures of them in full bloom, and you guys should really go out and see that, so thank you for supporting her with, uh, California Arbor Week proclamation. And again, thank you guys for the discussion, it was really great to listen to, thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Is there anyone else?
Uh, it's ten fifty-five, so I'm sure we're all ready to go to bed, right? Um, uh, it's been a, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Corey Wells, uh, Springville. Um, been a great meeting, I had a couple thoughts on, uh, item twenty-six with the publication timeline. Um, I know that the chief, uh, uh, city clerk and the deputy, uh, chief deputy, deputy city clerk, um, worked very hard, and, uh, you know, I just, I don't know what the staffing is, uh, uh, for that department, but maybe you can add another staffer for them, and that might help them out, maybe. Um, uh, the staff worked very hard, and, uh, you guys have been really putting a lot of work on them, and that's been very evident watching these meetings. Um, a lot of people that came today clearly have not been watching the meetings, that was very obvious, if, otherwise they wouldn't have said the things that they've said. Um, uh, and then, uh, also for the, uh, uh, item relating to passing, uh, providing the resources to the police department, um, I think it's, uh, fantastic, you guys continue to support the police officers, uh, in this area. Um, uh, there's a lot of cartel activity, and so the, uh, police, uh, uh, and sheriffs absolutely need, uh, the military-style weaponry. Uh, with the, uh, kind of, uh, gang and cartel activity that happened around here, I had the, uh, pleasure of, uh, hearing from Sheriff Boudreaux, uh, recently, and he was explaining how the cartel were abusing the fear-mongering that was being, uh, put forward towards the, uh, illegal immigrants around here who working on, who are working on farms. And what they've done is use that fear, the cartels have used that fear, uh, that, uh, these nonprofits out around here. Um, and, uh, went out to the fields, and the farm workers do not want to call the police or sheriffs because they're afraid they're going to get deported. And the sheriff has been very bold about that, uh, they will not be, uh, recommending people who are following the law and not breaking the law. Um, and, uh, so, uh, kudos, and also on the, uh, uh, items related to, um, the women's rights. Um, the, um, there's a lot of, uh, kind of crazy verbiage that was used tonight, um, uh, you know, I am a uh, proud white male, and I am a sigma alpha Chad white male. And, uh, you know, whatever, I don't care, I, I, you know, it's weird that they use the word, uh, cis in, in the, in the place of straight, who cares? Um, uh, there are in fact, and this is factual, there are, uh, boys and men going into the women's and girls' restrooms in these schools at McDermott, it is happening, the, uh, girls that are playing and practicing, if I can get thirty seconds. At McDermott, when they're doing their games, they have to ask, and I've seen this happen, uh, they ask for their coaches and their teammates to escort them to the bathroom so that they can have a partner walking with them to protect them. And it's very simple, um, trans women do not exist, it is not, that is, uh, uh, non sequitur, it does not, it does not happen. Uh, they are trans males, there's a difference, trans males are not trans women, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Wow, that was wild, just a couple points of clarification. Uh, first of all, that guy's something. Um, the, I heard, uh, one of you say, I think, that civil rights are based only on immutable characteristics, um, like race, but race is a social construct, too. Uh, and, uh, but even that, even aside from that, that's not, it's not true that, that civil rights are based only on immutable com-, uh, characteristics. Religion, something I'm sure is very important to all of you. So your civil rights reflect, you know, your right to be religious, and you have to know that. You can't sit up there and say mockingly to three hours of people that told you, we exist, we're. we exist, we're here. We have to pee just the same as everyone else, that they don't exist and they don't deserve civil rights because you feel like their life is mutable or immutable. Your religious life, which I'm sure is very important to each one of you, is also mutable, right? Maybe you changed churches, maybe you changed faith. You know people like that exist, even if you're not one of them. And you don't question their civil rights, whether they exist or not. You just don't. You know that. So please, when you put your head on the pillow tonight and it's just you in that moment between sleep and wake, think about what you're doing. Think about what you're saying. Think about what you've said and what you're going to say the next time. And please, before you say it the next time, remember what you thought about tonight on your pillow. You know, I sat here since six-thirty and I had my eyes on all of you all the whole time. I didn't start writing things down while, while you were talking to us. I looked at you. Yes, Vice Mayor, please pay attention, okay? You have five hundred thousand dollars. You talked about putting a fund of five hundred thousand dollars that you later decided maybe you have, maybe you don't, towards a fantasy dream of some sort of civil rights, uh, uh, suit that you're going to have standing and be the lead plaintiff on or something over all of this. And then later, later you said, "We don't think we have the money for roads. We don't have the money for three hundred thousand, three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars," I think you said, "to pay parks and rec." Uh, be, and you think it's okay because the job situation is such and they're not really going to go anywhere, so we can still keep that pay low? Is that really fiscal, fiscally responsible to set yourself up for, uh-
Please summarize, Mr. Chap.
Thank you for the same time everyone else got. Uh, and so, so is that really responsible of you as an agency, as our elected officials representing the city and, and leading the city to, to look at lawsuits, imaginary civil lawsuits that you're going to lose big time? Because you don't understand, like someone said, take their hands and listen. Go learn to people. You have the state hospital right down the street. This is a really big industry here.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll talk more.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Matt Kidder. I'm, uh, wanted to suggest a few things on, uh, Porterville Irrigation District, GSA, combining with the City of Porterville. I understand that, um, the JPA has a two-two vote on as far as two-two, two, uh, council and two PID board. I would like to suggest that we get a, uh, um, ad hoc committee or a stakeholders committee put together between, uh, city people that live in, in the city and some that, uh, farm in PID. And then from that ad hoc committee, have a chairman that has the final vote or the, the tie-breaking vote if there's anything that's opposed. Um, it's an idea that we've kicked around, talked to a lot of people. A lot of people think that it's a good idea. Um, and I think that the GSA moving forward with the City of Porterville and the PID, Porterville Irrigation District, is a good thing for both sides. Um, there, but there, there does need to be a tie vote, tie-breaking vote, I feel, because if there's something that's opposed, then we are wasting a lot of time that's not there to waste. So, you know, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone else? Please come forward at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone online?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move on to other matters. Uh, Councilman Rivas.
I have no question, uh, comments at this time.
Okay, uh, Councilman Green?
Yeah, I have, uh, something that's concerning the, uh, joint powers venture with, uh, P, Porterville Irrigation District. Um, yeah, I've, I've done a lot of investigation and researching it myself and, uh, there is a pending lawsuit against PID. Or, well, it's actually Eastern, the, the entirety of Eastern Thule. It's just raised a few questions that I think I'd like to get some answers to. I'm not saying that I'm totally against this. I'm just, I'm just wanting some more information, so when I vote on it or we all vote on it again, we'll be having informed and educated vote on the issue. Um, and I do have some questions, uh, and I'd like to add, add it back to the next, uh, council agenda if I could.
So you're, you're making a, a, a motion for a scheduled matter?
To, to have it back on the agenda next, in two weeks.
Okay. So, so what, just for clarification, you're, you're wanting more information on?
Yeah, I want, yeah, because I'd like to get, I'd like to get, uh, our city attorneys' input in it also with, with the pending lawsuit that there, that's involved in this issue.
So can I just provide some comment?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. We can bring back whatever, whatever you would like. Um, but I think there's more discussion here. So the lawsuit currently is with Fryant against the ETGSA, which we are still a member of, so it's-
Right, against Eastern Thule.
Fryant lawsuit against the ETGSA.
The Law State Water Board.
The law, Water Board's not suing. It's Fryant against the ETGSA.
I, I like that.
And so, but, and we'd like to talk about some more of those details and the differences between the organizations. So happy to answer any questions and, and talk with the legal counsel from ETGSA.
Can we, that way we get-
We'll just schedule for close session discussion.
I, I, I like that. Is that, will that work for?
We were going to need to anyways because there's going to probably be an update on that ETGSA stuff, so. We can schedule for the next meeting and have that discussion.
All right.
That way we keep our cards tight, Stan. Uh, is there any other comments?
I do have one more. I, I think there's something, I know, um, Donnie had some, the, the schools are opening up, uh, some of their fields for the kids to practice on for this season. If I may direct it to Donnie. Jason, may I?
Yes. Uh, are they, they just, is that the question?
Yeah, I'm just hearing that, yeah, that they're, they're, so the kids for practicing and stuff on some of the school grounds.
I do see, there's still signs posted on a lot of schools that say after six PM that they're supposed to open those up. And I do, uh, see some schools, I can't speak on behalf of, you know, all schools at both school districts, but, uh, I, I do see some are. Uh, so I, I, yeah, I'd have to check and, and-
Yeah, okay, yeah, well, what I'm-
I went by, uh, Burton School District over the weekend and their gate was open.
Yeah, I was just curious because maybe, you know, what the, you know, there's been this issue with the, uh, the, the older kids that, that need to play on, on full-size diamonds, regulation diamonds. And there really isn't anything in Porterville for the thirteen, fourteen-year-olds. Uh, I was wondering if, if we might be able to, uh, something like a MOU, um, what, I forget what that's called now. I forgot about it when I wrote it down. Can't remember now, the, um, mutual operating understanding, I think, is that, for the acronym, is that correct?
Yeah, a random.
Yeah, about maybe, maybe allowing some of the, you know, if these kids want to play baseball, the older kids that need regulation-sized fields might be able to use one of the high school fields.
My understanding, and, and I could be wrong, but Porterville Little League is working with PUSD and they're utilizing, and I, I would, I want to say I heard that from Frank Rodriguez, the president of Porterville Little League. So what you're talking about maybe, or, or are you talking about other stuff?
Like what?
You're talking about baseball, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so I believe that's already happening.
You do? I, yeah, I don't know.
You know what I can do is tie you in with Frank and you can ask that question?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Does that work? And, uh, is there anything else?
No, I don't have anything else. That, I'm just curious about that. But yeah, that'd work. I'll, I'll-
Yeah, I, I want to say that they, they opened the fields and, uh, Porterville Little League is, is got the thirteen-year-old, uh, Adrian-
They've got that.
Yeah, playing out it, yes. So let me tie you in with Frank and then, uh, if I'm totally wrong, you could throw me under the bus out here. Uh, Councilman Beltran?
Yeah, I, I had the same idea a couple of years back. Um, something that's been happening locally is the, by California law, the s, um, school playgrounds were considered, um, for public use. Uh, they were supposed to be opened up. That's how they had always been. And, uh, they weren't locked. There was open access, uh, but new, and it, it's district to district. Um, they've been start, starting to, uh, close them up. Uh, they use construction, um, use, uh, vandalism, some other reasons for, for the lockup. But another program that has started is, um, a lot of state funds have gone towards after-school programs. Um, when I used to work at, at a school site, um, we'd have people come on at four or five o'clock to utilize the fields, which was never a problem. What's happening now is there's after-school programs that go to six PM now. And so they don't allow anybody to use the sites until six PM and it just shortens that window for people in the neighborhood to utilize it. So it's just an unfortunate situation where it's just getting used. Um, just some clarification on that. Uh, there are earlier comments made, um, uh, something about the armory, about how, uh, maybe people are, aren't being treated properly. Um, the armory was opened up as an emergency use only. Uh, people don't realize probably the expense that the city, uh, has, uh, to provide a safe place out of inclement weather that, um, uh, provides the, uh, just bare requirements. We don't pass out pillows. We do not pass out blankets. However, there are restrooms there. The reason why the inside ones may not be utilized right now is because of vandalism and that's been going on. Even with the portables, uh, we did have showers at one time, but they were vandalized. So this is something that the city is, uh, trying to withhold. It's those people that are utilizing it that are abusing the usage. Um, could the city spend more money? Sure, but as we talked about, you know, this is going to come from other areas. It is, we do have the navigation center that has full services, um, that has all that, uh, need. It is limited. But again, we're kind of stretched thin on funding and we're trying to maximize the use. So, um, it was frustrating to hear that, uh, somebody made the statement, um, that she observed or heard, um, uh, a Porterville officer, a tell homeless person that, uh, they don't, they don't belong here or they weren't welcome there, something to that effect. And, um, I, I guarantee you that was not what was stated. Uh, whether it was a smart team or, uh, another officer, they are trained and constantly reminded about, um, you know, they have body cameras, um, that, uh, they're going to be scrutinized. It, it's not just in our community. It's all over. But it was unfortunate to hear that. I know some people like to conflate something that happens, but, uh, being on the homeless committee and working in that area, um, uh, the complaints I do hear are exaggerated. It's a misunderstanding. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, answer those comments. Um, there was also comments about, we've heard over probably the last two to three months, uh, from people that reside in the Santa Fe Senior Center there on, uh, Third Street in Putnam. Uh, they've acknowledged that PD has gone out there and, uh, tried to address some of their concerns. Um, I, I I don't want them to think that every time they come to council that all of a sudden we're going to jump and just put resources sitting out there. I drive all over this community. There are terrible drivers everywhere, not just Porterville. And so I'm, I don't want anybody to get hurt where there's flashing lights in that area for crossing along the trail. A block over, there's a signal light. I see people run red lights. I see people run stop signs. So I don't want them to think that they're being ignored, but we're not going to send an officer there just to make sure somebody is safe. There's too many intersections. We cannot put a four-way stop all over the area. This is, might come down to maybe a special detail of just getting, um, red light runners, uh, um, I'm guilty of this California stop of not making a complete stop. I'm guilty of that. We all feel rushed. But maybe we just need to be reminded. So I don't know if that could be, uh, maybe a specialized detail that we will start enforcing some of these things, especially in, in, you know, maybe using decoys and crosswalks, uh, to remind, um, drivers of their, not just their speed, but the pedestrians right of way. Um, let's see. And I'll leave it with, um, oh, the, uh, going back to the charter cities and, and different things. I, I believe, um, when we do this charter review, this is a great opportunity to look at stuff like road repair or maintenance. Um, just maybe some of the overreach by the state as much as, you know, um, I think during that charter review, we're going to find a lot of areas that we will, we can get back to local control, the prevailing wage, different issues like that. So I look forward to that charter review. I think that'll answer, uh, quite a few, um, questions in that. And I'll just leave all the comments that happened earlier today with, um, just Hebrews thirteen eight and Matthew seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Beltran. You never admit to breaking the law in front of the chief. It's, it's not, it's not good. He's, he never forgets. Uh, Vice Baron McCurvy?
Well, I, I really appreciate, uh, what you said there, Raymond. Matthew, chapter seven, the Broadway and the narrow path. It is not progress to start invoking Satan anywhere. Um, I, you know, I, I have this, I just want to say a couple of things about this. So psychological projection is very important for us all to understand. When, when someone points a finger at you and says, you know, you're judgmental, while they're doing that, they're judging you. When someone points a finger at you and says you're this or you're that, they, if they're saying you check your privilege, they're asserting their own privilege. And so there's, there's an awareness issue and we get a lot of activists that, that are, that are of a belief system that, uh, I hear too. And so this is more like gnosticism, to your point, Mr. Beltran. People that think they know better, that's a religion. And, you know, that you can't have a civil conversation if you're stuck in that place. That's, that's more like a delusional place. And so we have to choose what's good. We got to act on what's good and we got to give other people their space. And, you know, protecting women, that was normal until about twenty years ago. I don't know why that's not normal anymore, but it's not progress to think that not protecting wom, or protecting women is a bad thing. That's, that's just strange to me. But there's examples, and we just need to think about these things. No one would tell an alcoholic that you need to give him more alcohol to affirm his problem. No one's going to tell a wife-beater to go and beat his wife some more to affirm his problem. This affirmation stuff that's in our culture, it, it's nonsense. And I think we have to get past that and start talking to each other instead of past each other. And what the council's trying to do was completely misrepresented tonight. And, you know, I, I appreciate that invoking the scripture because that sermon on the mount is very important. And it, and it teaches us that the way to life, the, is a narrow path, making choices that lead to good things. And the way to destruction is the broad path where you can accept Satan in your world. I mean, that, that's indifference and intolerance in itself and it's just, it's odd to me. So we, we have a, uh, a mental health crisis throughout our country and throughout our world right now. And I think that we can all just kind of tone that down and start having a real conversation and stop talking about, "I'm smarter than you and you're dumb" and the threatening behavior is, it's really strange to see on full display here tonight. But I would just say, I think it was a good conversation because I think people can come out and express their feelings and I appreciate that we can do that in a free society, even if they're wrong. You have a right to be dumb. and I appreciate that we can do that in a free society, even if they're wrong. You have a right to be dumb. I would like to, um, I said a lot tonight, but I wanna finish tonight with a motion. I drafted something that I'd like to put on the agenda in the next meeting. It's called safeguarding parental rights in education and child upbringing. I sent this for CHOP and I wanna bring this to the council to talk about too. And I vetted this so that it's not gonna have the legal challenges that we just were talking about tonight, I don't believe, because it's just based on following the law. But I wanna draw a boundary on education and child upbringing. So I'd like to bring that forward, uh, for discussion in, in the next meeting, if you would. I, I sent a copy over to, uh, legal counsel.
Are you, are you calling for a motion to, to bring forth a?
Yes, it's an ordinance. City of Porterville ordinance. The state continues to overreach the bounds of the family. This secures those fundamental parental rights and makes that boundary very clear on where the, the city will stand in support of our parents and their rights and our education and our child upbringing. Safeguarding parents' rights in education. That's my motion. I'd like to put that in the next meeting.
Okay. Uh, I, I know we've, we've worked and talked about this a little and, uh, talking about some of the bills that the, uh, state has passed that violate parental rights. Um, and, and hiding information, uh, from parents, uh, like, uh, gender identity, or even to the point of giving children material to be sexually active, like condoms and birth control, and all the way to taking a child to go get an abortion without parents' consent. It is, uh, frightening to live in a state that would push that a kind of an agenda. And, uh, I love where you're going with this, uh, Vice Mayor, 'cause what we're trying to do is return to common sense and constitution, and the constitution of our United States. And the state has gone too far, so I'd like to second this, um, this motion. Is there any other, uh, discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero. Okay, is there any other comments, Vice Mayor?
I would just, I would want to leave something for folks to ponder, these seven words. Ambition must be made to counteract ambition. This is in Federalist fifty-one. And it's important that we find balance in all of our conversations in a free society. And it's great to have ambition out there, but it has to be countered with ambition. And so let's, uh, the, uh, CEO of Kmart back in the day, Alwyn Lewis, taught me, good teams fight. They fight for the right things. Let's make sure we're fighting for the right things.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'll just close out the evening, try to be quick here. Uh, really excited about Agenda Item number four with the bus stop shelters. Thank you for bringing that forward. Um, Agenda Item number twelve, uh, continued to, uh, maintain and, and maintenance on our streets. Uh, Agenda Item fifteen, updating the library rules of conduct. I know, uh, city manager, chief of police and city attorney all worked on that and I, I greatly appreciate that. Um, and, and providing good services for our constituents in the library. Agenda Item number sixteen, uh, with the weed abatement, giving the dollar raise, uh, making parks and leisures more universal and in, uh, weed abatement and, uh, homeless encampment abatements or encampment abatement in general. This is gonna make our team stronger. Uh, I'm excited to bring that, um, forward. Agenda Item twenty-one, the transit brand, uh, brand refresh. Um, you know, with all the great division in our country, um, and racism or whatever it is, I, I think the cure to that division is nationalism. And, and that Americana spirit of bringing everybody together as Americans. And so I, I really love pushing the agenda of that rebranding of the all-American city. And I, I think that's what brings all Americans together, no matter what you are or consider yourself. You're American first and, and that's what we wanna push here in Porterville. Uh, cutting regulations, uh, with, with the charitable car wash is the direction I wanna go. I wanna thank the council, um, for the support of women's safe spaces. Uh, this was not easy. We took a lot tonight. Uh, city staff, thank you for the great job in making sure we had a safe environment. Um, and, and also thank you for the support, uh, for the League of Charter Cities and a, a, a letter out to Huntington Beach. We'll see what comes of that. I'd like to thank the Breakfast Lions Club for having me on the twenty-fifth. Uh, and then also I would like to thank Robert Keeley for the invite to, to Larry Ag Luncheon. Had a great time with them. Um, and then I'll, I'll end with, uh, you know, speaking of some of the parental rights stuff, the Healthy Kids Survey is, is going around at the schools right now and there's a little noise on Facebook about it and some of the questions that they ask. And it's hidden through the guise of Healthy's Kids Survey, but they ask very personal questions in this survey. It's a hundred and forty questions and, um, it's frightening what the state is pushing on our children. Um, with that, uh, State Assemblyman Robert Rivas, uh, removing five assembly members, one being Alexandra Macedo for daring to question how money is spent in the state of California. Uh, the people screaming the loudest about democracy end up being the petty tyrants. And it's very unfortunate to see that. Um, with that, uh, there is a new law that's coming. It's AB thirteen thirty-three. It violates the castle doctrine, uh, and the ability to protect yourself in your home. I, I, I have, uh, drafted a, a letter of opposition. I have forwarded it to the city attorney and, uh, city manager. Um, and it is a letter of opposition. So this is my motion, uh, to get, uh, council support. Yes, yeah, so that's my motion here and I'm ending with that.
Well, first of all, I, I didn't have anything to say, but in closing, I just wanna say one thing. A lot of things were said. And, uh, you know, they have the, the free speech to do that, but I wanna end in one verse. And it's from Isaiah fifty-four. Every time I was dealt with situations of, of, uh, people like that or groups like that, I would refer to this, this one. It always made me feel at ease. And it's Isaiah fifty-four seventeen where it says, "No weapon that is formed against me shall prosper. And every tongue that rises up against me in judgment, thou shall be condemned." This is the heritage of the servant of the Lord, and the righteous is of me, saith the Lord. Amen.
Thank you. So I have a motion for an opposition letter of AB thirteen thirty-three?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, if there's any comments, we'll call for the vote. Passes five zero, so we'll see that on the next council meeting. Uh, with that, we still have closed session to get to. Um, okay. All right, thank you all.